Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January 4th budget session for the Town of Bennington. This is a work session. Happy to see so many of you here and thank you, Town Crew, for making the road so safe this morning. That was great. My name is Jeannie Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board. With me today from the Select Board are Nancy White.
I'm Ed Woods. Good morning, I'm Tom Haley.
I'm Mark Adams.
Jean Conner.
Thank you. All of us are in attendance except for Sarah Perrin, who had let us know that she had a prior engagement and would not be able to be here today. Also with us are Town Manager Stu Hurt, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes, and Josh Boucher from Cat TV filming us live, which I very much appreciate. All right, so we will start the present, the order of events today is the Town Manager will give us a very brief overview of what we're going to hear, and then we will proceed through Fire, Police, and Highway Departments and end with any other questions on the General Fund or anything that we neglected to ask earlier on. I would say stay away from agencies as they are on the, they're on the agenda for next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to determine who we're inviting to come and talk.
Okay. The order of things will be that Departments will share with us highlights, and then Select Board will ask questions, and then following that, anyone in the public who has questions is welcome to ask them. If I forget to do that, just remind me, but hopefully that will go smoothly. So with that, Stuart, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. This will be very brief. Jim Therrien actually did a pretty good job in his short article this morning in the banner. The overall budget combined in General, Highway, and Fire Department is up a total of 5.48%. That is principally in thanks to the employee workforce. As many of you know, we were facing a 26% increase in our healthcare costs. Working with Michelle and Melissa, Human Resources and Finance, we realized we could step down in plan coverage, save the town some money, and ultimately cut our healthcare increase in half. So we're looking at a 13% increase in healthcare costs, and if you've been following some of the problems that Montpelier and Brattleboro are facing, they're looking at 20% increases in their budgets and their tax rates. Healthcare is a great deal of that, and so our employees should be thanked incredibly for what they did. It doesn't really hurt their benefit, but it does save us a ton of money, and that's commendable. What you're going to hear this morning from Police and Fire and Highway are budgets that I think are trimmed to the extent they can be. Every one of them, I think, worked very hard to bring their budget. We had a goal of 5%. Not everybody hit that goal from a departmental perspective, but overall, we came very close with the 5.48% increase. With that, I think, I don't want to steal any of Paul and Jason's thunder about Fire and Police, so if you folks agree, we turn it over to them.
Super. Chief, I'll get, turn it to you.
Good morning. Thanks for being here today. It's nice to see there's several people here in the audience to listen to what we have to say today. Today, we'll be presenting first the Bennington Fire Department budget, which I can proudly sit here and say that the Chiefs and I had numerous meetings. We looked at the Bennington Fire Department budget, and we are at an increase of less than 1% in the Fire Fund. So we're very proud of that, and we're proud of the work that we've done. And so Nathan and I will present to you some of the highlights in the Fire Department budget, and then Nathan's going to talk to you really quickly about some new equipment that we've recently had installed downstairs, and not today, but at some point on a Monday night prior to a regular meeting. He'd probably like to show that equipment off to all of you so that you understand why it was needed and in recent use. So with that being said, the Fire Department budget for fiscal year 2026 has a highlight for replacing four sets of turnout gear this year and to the tune of $23,500. That's the nuts and bolts of the protection for the interior firefighter, where that firefighter will receive coat, pants, boots, helmet, and gloves and other associated items. And we try to do this every year, where we replace four or five sets of gear. With that being said, under Communications, mobile radios are, just like electronic equipment, they go out of date. We do, we do struggle at times, especially inside buildings like the hospital here in Bennington and other buildings where there's a large interior for radio communications. So we are asking for four new mobile, I'm sorry, portable radios for Motorola, as well as four pagers. This is also an ongoing request each year to keep our radio equipment up to date in Communications. No major building improvements this year. We've been very fortunate that, you know, we now have, thanks to Buildings and Grounds and others, we have the mini splits all throughout the fire facility here. That was, that's been a big improvement for us here at the fire facility. The rescue pumper truck, standard payment, $49,900 in that, in that section. And as far as machinery, big, big pieces of equipment this year, we're not planning anything major. Another big piece in our budget totaling approximately $87,000 is the principal payment and the interest payment on the ladder truck. And then another piece of equipment that we're looking at this year, because we do like to keep the floors clean here at the fire facility, is we do need a new scrubber for the, the truck bay. And that is currently in fiscal year 2026. People like Bill Clark and others run that machine before and after elections. We like this firehouse to look very presentable, and it is time to replace that old piece of equipment. That's really the highlights of the monetary. Nathan?
Yeah, I think we've about covered it.
Oh, hey.
You were good.
Super. All right. Questions from the Board. Nancy?
For Communications, do you have enough radios if you're inside a big building?
Currently, we have enough radios. We try to stay to a standard of every personnel having one in their pocket while they're inside in case their partner is missing or goes missing. But at this point, and like Paul said, that they just go out of date, everything starts to crumble, and inside the radio, we expose them to the elements, snow, water, fire.
But you have enough, if you were in a big building like the hospital, everybody would be covered inside?
All of our teams would be covered. We wouldn't send all 50 of our members in there at once.
Okay. Great. Other questions? Jean?
I think I know the answer to this. I'm going to ask it in case I'm wrong. The line item for salaries, I know we're a volunteer fire department, but you have an admin that is a paid employee, that I'm assuming that's what the salary line is for?
The salary line for the Fire Department budget allows for a stipend for each one of the Fire Chiefs, because these are, these are the people that are responding to a majority of the calls. They're spending a lot of time here, including weekend time, so there is a monthly stipend. They are required to complete a timesheet each month, which gets presented to me, I approve, and then it goes over to payroll. So there is a stipend for the Chief, the Deputy Chief, the Assistant Chief, and one of the things that we find is that we must keep up with our fire reports. So there's also built into the Fire Department budget is $3,000 for the person that's completing the fire reports, and starting very soon, my administrative assistant will be completing those fire reports, and there must be compensation for that. So that has not changed in the last couple of years, so that's what that $15,000 is.
Isn't there, isn't there an administrative assistant or?
So let's not be confused. The Fire Department does have their own secretary here for the Fire Department and their functions, such as their department meetings and taking minutes, notes, things like that. That's what that is. This person is a person that is designated to complete fire reports. It's very time consuming.
Yeah, no, you don't have to defend, I totally get it. I'm totally on board. But where is that line item? Her salary?
There is not one.
For the admin?
She's not paid.
She's not paid?
First of all, she is not correct. We have a male secretary here at the Bennington Fire Department.
There was a woman.
And at one time, but we, but he is very good at what he does, and, but he takes care of things that are related to the Fire Department, not the administration part of Town Government. It's two different things.
All right. Can I ask, sometimes in the past, we've gotten a list of what was cut from the budget that you really wanted and sort of got punted to maybe next year or not at all. So I'm wondering if you can tell us if there were things that were taken out of this budget that you, that you were looking forward to having in the future?
Jeannie, to be honest, we had several meetings. We didn't punt anything this year.
I'm happy to hear that.
We worked, I think, we, I think we worked diligently together, and, you know, we went back and forth on some things, and the Fire Chiefs are very satisfied with what, what we came up with. I know that Melissa Courier and the Town Manager were pleased with, with the Fire Department budget presentation this year. The only thing that we did ask for, which we did not, we're not punting, is we know at some point we're going to have to replace the roof here, and there is, we obviously have started a reserve account for that, which we put $5,000 away each year, because at some point, again, we'll, we'll have to replace that. But other than that, I mean, I think that this is a very fiscally responsible budget. It was, it was a pleasure working with the Chiefs and, and coming up with something that was realistic, and I'm, I'm happy with this.
Good, good.
Are you?
Absolutely.
So can I ask one more question about the turnout gear? So I, you know, I think this has been a very good strategy to replace some portion of the sets every year. What, how old is the oldest? It seemed like last year, we had a conversation about, there were some concerns that maybe it was the, the air packs that, that we needed to put, we needed to make sure that we updated things. Are we on a, do you feel like we're on a fast enough rotation?
I think what you're talking about was the compressors that what we brought in last year.
Okay, okay.
And the compressor, just to touch on that quickly, was installed in August, after we had it in, you know, in the budget prior, and it's been wonderful. Actually, I had just completed a 12-hour calibration, which you can see if you want to schedule that like Paul said. It's just been wonderful. More than half of the personnel are trained on it, they're using it, so I think that's where you're.
Okay, all right. And so the gear, so, so how many sets of gear do you have, and your, and what percentage of them are you changing out each year?
So it's typically the four that we'll get in.
Yeah.
We'll size those guys for that gear. Their older gear, we usually have a 10-year maximum.
Okay.
Per the recommendation, and their older gear can go to somebody who's brand new to the department, that is not going to go inside a building, is not going to get in a hot zone, and then if they were, you know, they're working out and getting their gears in, they'll get replaced with, with new gear too.
Got it. Okay. Very methodical.
You make.
Which is good.
Well, you have to stop and think too. I mean, when they go up to Pittsburgh and they're at the Fire Academy, there's no sense in wearing brand-new gear there to go into the burn buildings and get covered with soot and ash and everything. Let's wait for the real deal, for that to happen. So there's no sense in damaging brand-new gear. So their, their thought process on using old gear for new people to do training and things like that is an excellent idea. No sense in damaging brand-new equipment. So that's, that's the thought process, and listen, turnout gear is expensive. You know, 35 years ago, you know, you could put someone in new turnout gear for about $1,500. It doesn't work anymore, and things have changed dramatically. We also used to wear boots that, that came up to your thighs, and we didn't have bunker pants, so imagine that when we used to go into burning buildings and what was exposed when, you know, when you just had rubber boots. So now we make sure that everyone has boots that come up, you know, just below their knees to their shins, and they have bunker pants that are very protective. So yeah, I mean, so things, things have gone up, and their plan to replace four sets of gear every year is, is very reasonable, but it is expensive.
Super. It sounds very, it sounds like a very thoughtful process that you went through, which we would expect, yes.
And how are you doing as far as volunteers, actually, members in the department?
As far as recruitment and?
Yeah, yeah.
It's slow. It's not what it used to be.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, the generations have changed, so we do get a new guy a year typically, sometimes it's two, and, you know, as far as, like I said, with the gear stuff, if they, if they make it, you know, a year, we're pretty surprised. But we've been fortunate to take on, I believe, three new, three new members this year, and they've worked out pretty well.
Great. Any other questions? Yes, Clark?
Hi. Good morning, Chief. My question, I noticed you had a couple of lines on education. You know, you touched on stuff peripherally about how things have changed in the fire service, and I'm hoping you're telling me that this is more than enough funding for education. I think you can't learn enough about what you folks do to keep us safe and, of course, to protect your firefighters. Do you feel that your education budget is more than adequate to meet ongoing needs, or would like, everyone would like more, but I have these numbers.
More, Clark, but at this point, what the state and federal give us for programming through Vermont Fire Association to, to complete the firefighter one course is paid for by the state, so we do, we go to a Routman course annually, a couple of guys go up. So I think we've, we've budgeted adequately.
Okay, so you're satisfied with the, what's available to keep your folks current and on the skills?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Yes?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. We probably all read in the paper that there was a tragic fire a few days ago, I think it was Sandgate, the Arlington, and I just wanted to remind everyone that, that was a very real reminder for me that fires are very dangerous and safety is crucial.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have questions? If so, please go to the podium, state your name, and ask your question. All right. Anything else on fire? All right, well, we thank you very, very much. Next up is the Police Department.
Replacing Nathan, a little bit better looking, Lieutenant Randy, out here with me today.
I can't believe you said that. Yeah, he left, I know.
I didn't realize he left, I'm very sorry about that. So yeah, people, people think Nathan and I are twins, but I'm, I have a little bit left, I'm just saying. So with that being said, we're going to jump right into the, the Police Department budget. The Police Department budget is, is up. We tried to keep it as close as we could to the 5%. I believe that we are up 4.7% in the Police Department, so I believe that we met our mark that we had, and we'd like to go over some of the highlights with you in the Police Department budget. This is all about engaging in conversation and making sure that people on the, on the Select Board and people in the community know what the Police Department does. So we're going to start right out with salary and wages. In, in the salary and wage line, the union personnel are, are going to receive a 5% pay increase. That is what is in their, their working agreement. At the same time, we are asking that we add a position of an analyst to the Police Department for gathering data that is required for meetings like BENSTAT and the Situation Table and other programs that we are currently participating in, and also to assist the officers in gathering data during investigations. So that added $54,080 to the budget. At the same time, our clinician that we currently have from United Counseling Service, that's only a part-time position with us, and we are asking that that be increased to a full-time position. That is not in our salary line, however. That is in the line for other purchased services, and we are asking for that. So there's been, there's been a lot of conversation about how, how is the clinician working out that's assigned to your office? And I'll speak for myself, and if Lieutenant Randy has anything different or wants to jump in, that's fine too. Having a clinician in our office three days a week has been absolutely amazing, not just for dealing with events or situations within the community, but also dealing with some of the officers, because this past year in 2024, and we're not going to get into it, we've had some rather devastating and tragic incidents in Bennington. So it's really twofold for us. It does allow us to have a clinician that someone can talk to in the event that they need that. It actually opens up a whole opportunity for us to bring in others from United Counseling Service when we do have tragic incidents, so, and we don't receive an invoice for that from United Counseling Service. So we are asking, I'll get through all of this, and then you can ask me questions. So we are asking that that position be increased to full-time. We'd like to have that person in our office five days a week instead of just three shifts a week. So that's, that's where we're at with, with those two positions. I also want to share with you that the Bennington Police Department absorbs the cost of communications. What does that mean? That means that we run a, a communication center 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and at most, most times during the day, we have two communication specialists on duty. Overnights, we have one. On the weekends, we have one, which can be rather, rather hard at times for that one communication specialist. I'm going to share some numbers with you, just so you all understand why we need that. In 2024, the Bennington Police Department responded to 13,980 incidents. That's a lot. So just shy of 14,000. The Bennington Rescue Squad in 2024 responded to 5,569 calls. I did not run numbers for other agencies that we dispatched for. So the communications lot is, is not broken up into any separate line. It's all figured into our budget under Police Administration, and we need that. We need our communication staff to help Public Works, help Buildings and Grounds, obviously dispatch for police, fire, and rescue. We dispatch for Bennington, Bennington Rural, North Bennington, and we're also providing communications for a fee to the Town of Powell. And the rescue squads in our area, they do an amazing job with the staffing that they have. They're short-staffed, just like we are. However, it seems to be that we're, we're running a mutual aid program now out of the Bennington Police Department and our communications staff. We seem to be dispatching Bennington Rescue to multiple communities and out of state. And Powell Rescue is coming to Bennington on a regular basis, Arlington's coming to Bennington on a regular basis, and Manchester does come to Bennington on occasion. Bennington Rescue is leaving the state and going over to New York and taking care of calls over there. Massachusetts, North Adams Ambulance Services come to Bennington. They're coming to Powell on a regular basis because Powell needs mutual aid. So I don't share that with you to be negative about any type of rescue squad. I'm sharing that with you to let you know that the caseload for our communications staff has increased incredibly, and they do an amazing job. So with that being said, when, when we say that we are collecting fees from the Bennington Rescue Squad, as an example, we're collecting $18,000 from the Bennington Rescue Squad for communication services. So that means in 2023, they paid $2.96 each time they were dispatched. In 2024, they paid $3.23 for every time that they were dispatched. That does not help me. It does not help me with my Police Department budget, because again, we are, we, the Police Department, are absorbing the cost of communications, and this is not, this is not a secret. I did speak to the Executive Director of the Rescue Squad yesterday to let him know that I was going to be bringing this up, and I'm, and I'm just sharing with you, it's very expensive to run communications, and I don't think that we're charging enough money for the mutual aid services that we're providing out of the Bennington Police Department at this time. So when people look at our, our services, the overall combined services of law enforcement and communications, I think that we're getting a pretty good deal with, with where we're at in our, in our budget. Again, only with an increase of 4.7%. So moving on from that, under, under other purchase services, we talked about it already. We're seeking to have a full-time crisis clinician. Initially, when we started this program, the program was grant-funded. That grant funding ended this year. That's why we, instead of having a full-time position, we went to a part-time position. We wanted to see how it was going to work for us. As a police chief or as a lieutenant, we, we cannot oversee management of, of this person. That's why we have to contract with United Counseling Service. There are decisions that have to be made. Sometimes there are resources that United Counseling Services has that I certainly don't have as, as a police chief, and it is in our best interest to, to obtain those services from United Counseling Service. We've had an amazing relationship with them. They come with us on our execution of search warrants. They come with us on, on calls that, that, you know, are very concerning, and they provide counseling and services and put people in the right direction, which is absolutely necessary for, for the services that we provide. Years and years and years ago, we would respond and we would have people be on their own and have them get their own services. This way, with having a clinician in place, we are actually able to have, make sure that people are pointed in the right direction and, and have follow-up appointments. So again, I ask that you consider that, and it is beneficial to us in the work that we do within this community. Police training, we've asked that we maintain the police training budget at approximately, or at $15,000. We have state mandatory requirements that we have to meet, and at the same time, in the beginning of this year, this calendar year, 2025, there will be a promotional process. We will be sending people up to leadership training, as well as new, all new supervisors will have to go to internal affairs training. Internal Affairs Training, just as an example, is $800 per person, so when you look at $15,000, that, that money will be spent wisely to keep us professional where we're currently at. As far as our police buildings, we are proposing 30, approximately $34,000 for a complete overhaul of our safety and security system within the Bennington Police Department. Some of our cameras are outdated and obsolete, and we are looking to the wiring in, in the cameras. Some of the wiring will remain in place, and we're looking to replace the cameras. Having someone such as Nick Cave, the IT Director on staff, is going to save us a considerable amount of money, but it is time to replace all of those cameras, and our communications staff will be able to monitor all of those cameras within the communications room. Isaac, where are we at with Isaac? Impound Storage and Animal Control. If, if any of you have driven up Orchard Road, you can certainly see that our, our impound building is up, operational, and being used on a regular basis. Our animal control building is lovely. It, the grays are off a little bit in color, but it looks amazing, and drives me crazy, and I will tell you that our animal control building is being used on a regular basis. We have the ability, the lieutenant and I, to pull up on our iPads what's going on there, both at the impound building as well as the animal building, and we are able to monitor the, the dogs that are, that are in there, and there's one, there's one living there now. So we're very pleased. So we're, we're very pleased about that, and I'm just going to digress for a moment. We could not have done this without our friends at Public Works. We couldn't have done it without our friends at Buildings and Grounds. And of course, our IT Director, Nick Cave, I did cause Melissa Courier lots of stress during this, this building, so we appreciate her, and we appreciate Stu and Dan putting us in the right direction, and Stu pulling back the reins on the chief a little bit, because this facility, some people call it a compound, but it's not. These two facilities are exactly what we needed to do the jobs that we're doing, to make sure that animals are safe, and to make sure that people are not breaking the windows out of police car, out of, not police cars, out of cars that we have in the police parking lot, and stealing the evidence before we have an opportunity to execute a search warrant. It happened three times, and it will not happen again. We have an amazing security system in place, and there's a few things that, that we need to, to work on, but, and, and, you know, I know I joke about Melissa, but I guess I could joke about my friend RJ Jolly, who's sitting behind me, who I'm going to duck here in a minute. Caused him some stress as well. And of course, Steve Tetro and, and his crew laying the concrete. It was, it was just an amazing project, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you about all of the volunteer hours from members of my department, up there with hammer and nails and nail guns and just, you know, build, build, build. And it was, it was a lot of fun, and, and we did recognize the folks that volunteered their time to, to make this happen. And I just want to share with all of you, this is 100% a step in the right direction for us, and then to build off of that, the reason why they're calling this a compound is because I have spoken to Dan and Stuart about a 30 by 30 training building. We're already getting articles from the school district, so we can fill the 30 by 30 training building up there, do all sorts of training, set up classrooms, have movable walls, and things like that. More to come the next time I get in front of the Select Board, not at a budget meeting. So we are, the police equipment, we continue to, to pay the $28,000 a year for our body cameras and in-car cameras, which are very beneficial to what we do. I do want to share with you, under line 014180830, under machinery and equipment, that is two new police cars, completely outfitted. And the only thing that I did make an error on is when I proposed the budget to Stuart, we had listed in there hybrids, because we had been purchasing hybrids. We are going to go back to gas-powered vehicles. The hybrids are...
Yeah.
Yeah. So they, we, we have our hybrid vehicles spend a lot of time over being repaired, and it's just not worth the extra right now. We would have to add between $8,000 and $10,000 to that 133 to buy hybrids, and the downtime is unbelievable. The batteries die. It's just, it was a complete debacle by Ford, and Ford will admit to you that, that these vehicles should not be used as frontline vehicles. So we are going back to gas-powered vehicles, complete gas-powered vehicles, and that's what this number reflects. So I apologize. It is my fault, because I did leave the word hybrid in there, but when we found out how much money they were, you know, again, we'd have to add between $8,000 and $10,000. And it's just, in the long run, it's, it's just not worth it. On the flip side of that, we did, again, giving RJ credit, RJ Jolly from Public Works, we are selling our used police cars at auction, and this year, we, we brought in 14, just over $14,000 for two very used police vehicles, which we're very happy that we received that money, and thank goodness, it's, you know, sell and run, so. Just saying. So...
As is.
As is. So, no, just kidding. They, they run this year. So with, with that being said, on, on the police department side, that really is the highlight of, of the police department budget. I'm, you know, I don't want to pat myself on the back, so I'll pat Cam on the back. We worked diligently at, at keeping the police department budget where it's at, and, and listen, I, I think that we, I think we did a pretty fantastic job this year. There's, there's just a lot going on in our community. Please pay attention. Some of our, our criminal cases that we've been working on, people are taking plea agreements in the federal system, and, and people are going to jail. And I know that some people cringe when they hear me say that, but there are times that people need to go to jail, and some of the cases where people have recently pled, they need to be in jail for, for some of the things that they've been doing. Members of the Bennington Police Department are, are working very hard at keeping our community safe. We've, we've, we've had three drug search warrants. We've been very successful to bring in the new year, and, and that will continue. We have really knocked back violent crime. 2021 through 2023 into 2024, we were seeing lots of, of bad things happening with our federal partners and the excellent work from the members of the Bennington Police Department. We, we've, we've really brought about some change, in my opinion. We've knocked back some gang activity that has been happening. We've helped the Massachusetts authorities dismantle some gang activity down in the Springfield and Holyoke area, which we were seeing here in Bennington. This nonsense of, you can't say that there is gang activity in Bennington is not true. There has been, and we continue to push back on that, and it takes solid equipment and solid people to make that happen. So I know at least one of you is going to ask, because I heard the question of the fire chief, so let me just dive real quick. The, where are we at personnel-wise? We're, we're currently down five. We have one on injured reserve, so that means that we are currently down six. We recently switched to, officially, switched to a 12-hour shift, which is working for us for coverage and, and things of that nature. But when you look at being down five and one on injured reserve six, that's really a whole shift. So we're working with three or four people on a shift. Ultimately, our, our goal is, is to work four to five people on a shift, and, and we are trying. We have two people right now that are going for testing at the police academy. It is very difficult to recruit people into law enforcement. We see that in, in all departments our size, and we're seeing that with major state agencies like the Vermont State Police, drive by the barracks and see how many cruisers are parked out back that aren't being used. And it's very hard to draw people in. Stuart stole my thunder a little bit, and I have to give complete credit to my personnel and to the personnel over at Public Works. When Stu met with all the department heads and said, oof, you know, and, and Michelle Johnson, who doesn't get sad very often, she's a very upbeat person, and we realized how much it was going to cost to keep the health insurance where it's at. You know, between the, the two bigger departments, Public Works and the Bennington Police Department, you know, we, the folks got together and, and decided, well, let, let's go with this plan instead of this plan, thereby saving the town money, and, and it, it had to happen. It just had to happen. So I do agree with what Stuart said at the beginning here. You know, we, we have to applaud the, the people that work for the town, and, and let's recognize the people that work for the town and all of the positive things that they do, and instead of being critical. I don't think that the Select Board is super critical of, of what happens, but there are people in the community that sometimes that 5% drive me crazy. And, and we are doing the best that we can on the police department side with what we have to work with. So I, I applaud all of you for being here today. And one last deep dive, without getting emotional, I will tell you I miss Gracie terribly, and we have tried very hard to keep this community safe, and she was a big part of that. And I will tell you on a positive note, this community has been unbelievable in making things happen for us. It's very awkward for me to continue to ask people to donate, 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 donate to the police. Please donate to the police so we can make things happen. I don't see any other departments having to go out there and ask for donations, but we're doing it, and we're making it happen. And I will tell you that we are so close to being able to purchase a dog, not to replace Gracie, but a dog to add to our canine unit. No one will ever, ever replace Gracie and all of the work that she has done for this community, all of the kids pulling her tail and, 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 you know, I'm not going to do the bark thing, I promise. I will tell you that putting together that memorial and seeing over 300 people participate in that was absolutely amazing. We are, we are very close. Within the next two weeks, I will be announcing who we have selected for a handler for a new dog, and a new dog is going to cost us approximately $8,500. The recommendation from the Vermont Police Academy is that we obtain a dog that is at least 10 to 12 months old, that has a drive, and we have been given some recommendations. We have received huge outpouring of people that want to provide us with a puppy or want us to buy a puppy for about half the price, but the academy direction is to present a handler and a canine and, and to pay the money so that that dog, when they get up there, the dog is ready to work. Stark, where are we at? Stark is amazing. If, if you saw the paper, you know that Stark went on his first search warrant. What a proud little man he is. And we are so pleased, and we are so fortunate to have Officer McCauley, who spent a lot of time away from home at the police academy, and Stark wants to work. They are like two peas in a pod, Officer McCauley and Stark. They go to the bathroom together. It's very weird, but the bottom line is, is that Stark does not leave his side, and that's what we want to see. And sooner rather than later, we'll get Officer McCauley and Stark out to some community events where everybody can see him. He is still growing, but he is smart as a whip. And I'm, I'm very pleased for the community support that we receive. I'm pleased to receive support from the Select Board, and, you know, Dan Monks and Stu Hurd have been very supportive. Melissa always says to me when I go in her office, what do you need today? But she's always supportive, and Michelle Johnson's supportive of my staff, and I can't, we have an amazing team of people, department heads and town staff that get things done and under Stu's leadership. So, you know, I, I just wanted to share with you, we are doing our best with the police department. Cam, what do you have to add?
Oh, I don't know. I just covered it all. I do, would like to say something on the clinician. I, I can't tell you how valuable that is, not only to our officers and our, our communication staff, but to the community. When we have a, a critical incident, you know, we, we just had one before the holidays where a young man lost his life, and that, that, that was pretty emotional for, for our personnel and, and the community, but that, that clinician stood out there on the side of the road in the pouring rain for hours, supporting our officers, and then went and supported the family. And that, and they were on duty. We didn't have to call anybody, they were there. And I can't, it's invaluable. So I, I support everything the chief has said.
Thank you. That was very comprehensive, and Cam, I'm glad there was something left for you to add. So thank you. I think you did an excellent job of going through the budget, and I'm sure that we have some follow-up questions, so I'll ask Select Board members, does anyone have an immediate question? Yes, go ahead.
So first, thank you for all that you do and how hard you prepared for today. It's obvious that that, that was done. I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions as it relates to personnel. The clinician position going from part-time to full-time, is that going to be, let me choose my words carefully. Do you see that being filled right away, those open hours?
I, I believe that we can, we can make that happen with, once this budget passes, and I'm confident that it will, once the budget's passed in March, we will notify United Counseling Service, and, and it'll be their responsibility to, to fill that. We might fill it with two people instead of just one, but I, I do see that happening. We, they actually have someone, I don't want to spill all the beans here, but they actually have someone in training right now who's working with another agency, and that person may be available to us as well. So I, I do see that getting filled honor about July 1st.
And if it's two people that fill that full-time slot, you're confident that the, that there won't be a breakdown as, as one person punches out and another person punches in? There isn't any value to consistency with one full-time person? I'm just curious about that.
No, I, I think quite, quite contrary. We, we, there are approximately five clinicians that we work with at United Counseling Service. One of them is assigned to our office, and, but when we have these critical incidents, they all come together, and we work together. And, you know, we, we might have group sessions, some people prefer that. We might have, you know, one-on-one sessions. Sometimes they send, they've sent three clinicians to our office, and my office is used, the lieutenant's office is used, and the small conference room is used. So there, there's a relationship with, with United Counseling Service 100% in our, and I, and I see that as a benefit. It's a great question.
Last question is one that you guys have heard me ask you for 100 years. Your budget assumes full-time staffing, correct?
Yes.
So that answers my question. In a perfect world, July 1st, you have the money to fill every open position, and magically we're going to work toward doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I wish there was some magic in this. We, we are working. I think, you know, Stuart has been supportive. He knows that Michelle, Dan, Stuart, Cam, and I, we need to get together and start taking a look at what's the draw to some other agencies. I mean, again, they're not all up to full staff. Some, some agencies are copying what we've been doing, where they're hiring people, sending them to Level 1, Level 2, which we won't get into all of that, and working them full-time hours with a part-time certification, just to see how they're going to work out, and then sending them off to the academy. For us, it's been very beneficial, because we, we have learned on at least two occasions where people were not, it wasn't what they thought it was going to be. So we're not hiring someone, sending them off to the academy, getting them through the academy, only to then have them fail, because that costs us a fortune.
Sure.
Right? So, and, and there's, there's no return on that. So, you know, we, we just need to, we just need to really sit down and brainstorm and figure out what, what we are going to do as a community or as, as a town to try to attract people. And listen, let, let's be honest. I mean, we're, we're a very busy agency, and I am not knocking any other agency in this area, but by far, we, we handle far more situations, far more critical incidents, and it would, it would, it would behoove us to kind of sit down, brainstorm, and, and look at that. And then we do have that planned for the beginning of, of the year. We're going to, we're also going to look at the working agreement and, and see if there's anything that we can, we can change there. Going to these 12-hour shifts permanently certainly is, is, is something that will help us draw people to the department, because when you, when you look around us, I don't think there's any municipal police department in the area that's not doing 12-hour shifts. And it affords the opportunity, one of the reasons why we did this, it affords the opportunity to have every other weekend off. When I started this job, you went, you went six weeks before you had a weekend off, and that weekend you did not want to work, but old Sergeant Ella would call you up on the phone, and you did not say no. Years ago, when your boss called you, you did not say no about coming to work. So the bottom line is, is that I think for a family life and for wellness and health, having every other weekend off to be able to spend with your family is beneficial, and that's one of the, one of the draws that we're hoping to utilize to let people know that we are on a 12-hour shift now and, and draw, draw people to the department.
I appreciate that. I just want to say that I, I very much appreciate the heavy lift that it took to get to where you are today with 12-hour shifts, the whole department, the Human Resources Department. That was an open-minded consideration, and I encourage you to continue to keep your open mind as you recruit. We've had some conversations with the town manager as a board about our overall recruiting efforts, and I'm interested in seeing how you guys can expand your, your reach a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Tom, and then Clark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Under police investigations here, other purchase services, you're asking for a $6,000 increase on that line item? What, what is that $6,000 for?
What's the number?
Looking at 4110.560 on page six.
Yep.
That $6,000 increase is for a new program to be used by the Patrol Division and the Detective Division for evidence control. We have been over to the Brauterville Police Department and looked at the system that they have in place, and we want to put that system in place here. And we want to put that system in place here where evidence will be tagged with barcodes and evidence when it comes time for trial, things like that. We'll be able to use, utilize those barcodes. Things aren't going to be stored just in boxes. Everything is going to be completely organized. But the, but the evidence control program is, the fee for that is $500 per month and times 12 is $6,000.
And last year, when we were talking about your, your education budget, you initially asked for $15,000 and said you would still like to have the $3,500 because there were other trainings that you would like to take. So we put the $3,500 back in. This year, you're asking for the 15. Are you confident the 15 is sufficient?
Again, can you tell us the number?
Yeah, I'm sorry. 4130.410.
Thank you.
So, so we are confident with that this year. We, we have been utilizing the line. There's like, for example, the FBI LEADER trainings are $795, you know, per training. That's where we're sending our people off. There's three different levels of, for example, supervisor training. So really, it's about $2,400 to get somebody through all three levels of supervisor training. But we're not doing that all in one year, right? So we took a look at it this year and we knew that we were getting close to that, to that 5%. So we did put it at $15,000.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you have the money you need.
No, sir. No debate this year.
All right.
Great. Clark?
All right. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning.
And LT, I don't want you to feel neglected. So, geez, you stole my thunder. Your change to gas power selection versus hybrid was a concern I had, but thank you. But one other question I did have in general, what is the criteria to replace vehicles? Is it time, mileage, maintenance history? What do we do to make that decision?
So, that's a great question, especially with you, with you being rather new on the Select Board. Years and years ago, we used to rotate our police cars every two years. Now we find that we can keep our cars for three years. So we do rotate our frontline cars out every three years. And then those cars either go to the detectives or our community resource specialists are using a car. We take the decals off and, you know, things like that. So we repurpose the cars and then when, when they're ready to go to my friend RJ Jolly and Auctions International, we rotate them out there. So we do try to utilize the cars anywhere from three to five years. You have to remember something. Even though the car might have 115,000 or 120,000 miles on it, just as an example, that, that does not consider or take into consideration the number of idle hours on traffic stops, crash scenes, and things like that, where you have to run the car to keep the lights going and keep the camera rolling and things like that. So, you know, sometimes when people look at it and say, "Oh, my gosh, the police department traded in a car that had 115,000, or sold a car with 115,000 miles." Yes, because of all of the idle hours. We just got very lucky. One person that we haven't talked about is our mechanic, Shannon. He is amazing. And he really pulled some strings for us recently. And we had a situation with a car where the motor just went out. And Shannon went down there and put on the boxing gloves with the Ford guy and we were able to, were able to replace that at, with just the cost of the deductible to the town. And so that was, that was a car that we had purchased and extended warranty. And I think we were, I think we were at like 98,000 miles.
Couple thousand.
We were like 2,000 miles away. So Ford was kind of like, "Oh, man, dude, look, it says here 100,000 miles." So fortunately for Shannon, I didn't have to get involved in that. And that's, that's another great reason why we have this mechanic. And he didn't have to do the work. We had Ford do the work and, and the car's back up and running. So, but that's a case in point of why we rotate our cars out because, you know, the miles, it's just not about the miles. It's about the idle time. So, so again, we changed it. We rotate them out every three years and we buy two new cars a year. That's just standard practice. At one point, we were buying, we would go two years, two years, and on the third year, we would buy three cars. But we've able, we've been able to, to work that out so that we don't do that. It's every, it's every, every year we buy two cars and that's it. So we're saving a considerable amount of money that way as well.
Okay. No, it's just one of the things I've noticed since I came to this town, and I guess, I think I mentioned RJ, I'll say it again. I'm duly impressed with how well our vehicles are cared for and maintained. So I want to kudos to, again, you know, RJ's maintenance staff and all. And thank you for being good stewards of our money.
Thank you.
Other questions? Nancy?
How many cars do we have? Just two that are hybrid?
So, so right now, I believe we have three cars that are, that are hybrids. And yeah, that answers your question. I don't want to get into how badly they've been for us, but...
No, but are they going to be the first ones that we swap out?
So we, we have a car right now. So the next, these two cars that are going to be, two of the cars that are going to be replaced are hybrids. The third one will continue, we will continue running with. And then next year, that will get swapped out. So the answer is yes.
Okay. As far as the issues financially with the dispatcher, you doing so much or so many others, has anybody been talking to the state about getting us some money to help address this?
That's a very interesting question. So there is no money from the state to replace equipment or to help us with our situation. We have, you know, the Emergency Medical Service as well as the Fire Department, they do have a mutual aid system in place. Most recently, Jeannie brought it up, you know, with, with the devastating incident up in Sandgate. It was our communication center that initially started that operation once Arlington was dispatched. But then we took over the mutual aid part of it with Polinol, Bennington, North Bennington, Shasbury, and all the other departments that were responding until we could get a mutual aid person here at the Bennington Fire Facility to take that over. But that's something that, listen, the Bennington Fire Department agrees to be part of that mutual aid system, which I support 100%. And because of that, and because we dispatch for Bennington Fire, that is our obligation until the base unit downstairs signs on with a mutual aid coordinator. But there's, so the short answer is, no, there's no money from the state available for that.
I guess my concern there, and it goes to the clinician too, which we need, but I think it's time for people elected at the local and state level in Bennington to start putting the pressure on the legislature. I think they've done very little to address mental health issues. I'm aware of programs that, over the years, may be driving up issues in Bennington. And I think the state needs to start helping us out. I can see us paying the $48,000. The first grant we had, didn't that end two years ago for this position?
It ended, it ended last year so that we, so starting July of 2024, we started paying United Counseling Service.
Yeah. I just think we need to all put the pressure on the state. When you look at the budget and some of the things they're spending money on, they have to understand what priorities are. And this certainly is a priority. And I don't think we should just say, "Okay, we'll handle it locally." They've got the money. They should be helping us out with it.
We, the other thing I'll share with you, I'll share with all of you, is yesterday I was working with another member of the Vermont Association of Chiefs of Police on trying to put together a legislative luncheon up in Mount Pelear. And that is one of the topics, if we can get our legislators to get together and have lunch with us at the Capitol Plaza, that is something that we would like to discuss with them, is all of the mental health issues that we as law enforcement officers are facing throughout the state. I don't think, Nancy, that the, that the state can afford to, in my opinion, afford to put a mental health or crisis clinician in like smaller departments, but Springfield, Bennington, Rattleboro, Rutland, I think that they could be helpful. And they were helpful initially. And that's, they gave us the opportunity to try this, but there's just so much going on in and around Bennington. The Vermont State Police out of Shasbury, they have a clinician that's assigned to their barracks. Actually, they have two that are assigned to their barracks. And, you know, in all, most all of the other barracks around the state have at least one clinician. That's why when, when things happen, happen in Bennington, if we don't have the clinician available right away, they can call their clinician and see if their clinician is available to respond and help us out. That's how sometimes we end up with three or four clinicians when we have, you know, a catastrophic event. So I agree with you 100%. And, and that's going to be, as you know, our legislators are going back into session. And, and that is a topic that we would like to discuss with them, is the mental health issues that we're seeing in and around Vermont. Good point.
Well, I, people may have read, you probably are aware of the person up in Burlington. The police department has dealt with the same person over 1,800 times. And this is, you know, one of the things you get with all the catch and release laws. Vermont doesn't have anything to do with a person who has these serious issues, who really needs 24-hour supervision. And I think in Bennington, we have to stand up and say the state has got to take, has got to do something.
So, so let me, let me, because this is a budget work session.
Yes.
I, I want to share this with you. And I'm going to, I'm going to lean on the lieutenant and he's going to give you very briefly, the state is currently funding the Situation Table here in Bennington, which, Cam, just really briefly, please.
So the Situation Table is made up of community members where someone from an organization brings information to the Situation Table on a specific individual that would need, is at an elevated risk for some type of harm. And it is discussed at the Situation Table, not so much the person, but the, the case. And then once the group of the members of the Situation Table all agree that the person is at the elevated risk for harm, then they identify what agencies sitting at the table are best suited to identify and, and the needs of that individual. Once those are identified, they're separated from the Situation Table. At that point, the individuals identified at that specific group, and then they start a, some type of plan to address those needs. Our first meeting is going to be next Wednesday, the 8th. You know, there was some struggle with this, whether or not we were going to continue with BENSTAT because it is a lot of work. And, you know, the chief already spoke about the analyst position. Right now, we're doing that with all our other work with the assistance from our communication staff. And, you know, getting all that data and ready for our monthly meeting is a lot of work. So then that, to add a Situation Table on top of BENSTAT without the, you know, assistance of an analyst to have all that information is just a lot of work to put on our staff. But, you know, so we had a meeting just before the holidays to decide whether or not we were going to continue with BENSTAT or not, or the Situation Table, which way, how we were going to progress. And the members of BENSTAT said that, you know, they did not want to stop the work that BENSTAT was doing because we were seeing progress. And there was value in continuing with BENSTAT. But they also saw that there was value in the Situation Table. The thing that you have to understand is that BENSTAT is germane to Bennington. That's, those stats are coming out of our, our agency and that's for individuals that we are dealing with. And a Situation Table is countywide. So we agreed that BENSTAT would continue on a modified schedule. And just before, the members would meet before Situation Table for about 30 minutes to talk about those high-frequency individuals.
So with that being said, one of the reasons why we want, we want the Situation Table to be countywide is we know that there are people that use resources in Bennington. We know that they then moved to Manchester. And then when that gets, when the heat comes on there and, and they're not getting assistance, they move over to Win Hall or to Arlington or whatever. The difference between BENSTAT focusing just on Bennington and the Situation Table, Situation Table is going to be countywide and the state is sinking money and resources into that. So we just have to remember that, that the state hasn't left us out high and dry on, on this. You know, we've, we've been, we've been working with Commissioner Morrison and others to make this happen. And so there's resources that are being utilized. We just don't see, it's not like a grant. We don't see the funding. We pay it out and then we submit reimbursement, right? Or we seek reimbursement. So that, the state's just paying for this. And we had the Situation Table training here at the Bennington Fire Facility. But we also agree that these meetings need to move around the county because it's not just Bennington. Manchester has issues too, as does Arlington. And sometimes when you try new programs, people are reluctant. But between Project Alliance, BENSTAT, and now Situation Table, we are getting people help that they need. And, and I would be remiss if I tried to list everyone but United Counseling Service, the hospital, the police department, Turning Point is huge for us, and the Bennington Rescue Squad. I mean, everyone's taking on more and more responsibility so that it will alleviate some of the pressure on the police department, I believe, in getting people the help that they need. And again, the state is funding that. So there is work behind the scenes that not everybody knows about. And we do, we do try to beat the state up for as much as we can get, trust me.
Great. I have, I have three questions for you. Can we, talking about the analyst position, did we have an analyst on staff?
Yes.
Before that was free to us or?
Two different, two different situations.
Okay.
We do have an analyst that is brand-new to us. The other analyst took a position, I would say not by choice, up in Rutland. And so he was amazing. We have a new analyst now and she is still learning. But that is a criminal analyst.
Okay.
Two different things here, two different, two different things. We're focused on guns, drugs, violent crime. That's what that analyst does. And you are correct. We don't pay for that person. That person is assigned to our office and is in our office basically four and a half days a week.
Okay. And so the new position, is that part-time, full-time?
It would be, it would be a full-time position.
Okay.
And we would be looking at stats, numbers.
Bennington-focused as a, so it would be sort of back, so it would be the analysis that BENSTAT needs, that Situation Table may need, that CPAR may need.
Correct.
Stuff you may need.
Yeah.
You know, that the board may need.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So that's one. Two, on communications, so you had, Chief, you had commented that the current charge doesn't cover the cost. I'm, what is the solution? If you increase the, I don't know, the cost for dispatch, if that's, if that's how it works, what is a solution? What do you see as a solution to Bennington Police Department really being dispatched for the, for much of the county?
I mean, we, we-
What do you want to see happen?
We have the solution. I mean, we're, we're doing it now. My, my issue is I want people to understand, you know, why the police department budget is the way it is. I also want you to understand that at some point, and again, we love the Bennington Rescue Squad, I want to be very clear on that, but with the number of calls that they, that we are dispatching for them to receive $3 roughly, you know, every time we dispatch, it's not just as simple as pushing a button and sending them. I mean, there's tracking, there's logging, there's information that they need, there's reports that they need. You know, we need to take a serious look at that and we need to say $18,000 is not enough. And years and years and years ago, when we came up with this $18,000, I do believe that the board was involved in, in making that decision. And right now, we give the Rescue Squad, you know, over $200,000 a year. I think we need to take a serious look at that number and say, "Okay, well, you need communications. You're only paying $18,000." So a solution for me would be to say, "Hey, listen, this year, we're going to give you year, we're, we're going to give you $200,000, and, and that's it, because, you know, you're paying $1,850, so, so, you know, $68,000, at least fund one of the positions at the Bennington Police Department. So we would ask them for revenue.
Okay. So that, that was actually where I was going with that, is that the rescue squad is asking for close to $20,000 in additional funding this year. And they'll be coming at the next meeting. They'll be coming to the next meeting. But, but just, I mean, but still, we need to be looking at this holistically. They have, I mean, they have very real needs, and I understand that they're not compensated at the rate they need to be compensated. But, but either are you. So, okay. So the, so the, the $18,000 doesn't cover it. What, the funding there is really to help pay for staffing, for, for dispatch, and for the follow-up work that has to happen. Is that, just so I'm understanding?
Right. And it's not, and it's not just that. I mean, you know, down the road, we'll be discussing equipment. I mean, I think that, you know, there's, there's a big piece of this. I mean, if, if we don't have the, the up-to-date equipment, if we don't have trained personnel, it's, it's just not going to work. And as I said earlier, it's, it's not a dig. It's, we're asked to do more and more with emergency medical communications dispatching than we've ever been asked to do. And, and that, and at some point, quite honestly, at some point, on a Saturday and a Sunday, we're going to have to put in an additional communication specialist to help cover. I mean, these transfers on, on the weekends from nursing homes and, and, and medical facilities to the hospital, it's a lot. And let's not forget, that's not the only job that our communication specialist is doing. We have officers stopping cars, we have car crashes, we have things that they have to answer the phone, and that's just with one person. And at some point, if, if we're going to continue to have the volume that we have, you know, we're going to have to take a serious look at bringing on additional people, not just having one person work a shift on a weekend.
So that, I think we're asking you to think about that right now, rather than, than waiting another year, because it sounds like it's already a pushpoint. So it would be, I mean, if you had, you know, if, if that communication dispatch cost instead of $18,000 was $28,000, you know, so if there were $10,000 more, I don't even, I mean, I don't even have a sense of, of what, of, of the math you're doing, which maybe both of you are doing math as I'm speaking. I'm just looking.
I'm making notes. I need a calculator to do math.
No, so I'm not asking you to do it off the top of your head, but I'm just saying that the, or maybe I am, but it, it just feels like this is a real, this is a real pinch point. And, you know, my third question was about overtime. And, and I think the, you know, I, I think that one of the things that this board wants to make sure is that as we are increasingly thinking holistically about how the police department is sort of that, is a hub, and also a collaborator with everyone in town, that does add stressors to dispatch. It has, well, it adds stressors across the board. But dispatch is, is one of those spots, and we really need to be thinking about how we handle that. And I don't want to wait till, I don't want to wait till you guys are, are at a breaking point. So let's, let's think about that. I'm not saying we can do anything about it. We, you know, obviously, this is new to us, but I think to the extent that you can give us guidance, that, that would be helpful. Okay. And then my third question is about overtime wages. And I understand overtime costs, am I understanding correctly, that overtime costs go up because it's, it's one of the, the downsides of the 12-hour shifts? Because you've got, if, if you have a gap to fill, it's a bigger gap, it's a bigger gap to fill. And so, I mean, I see this as a temporary, I'm hoping this is a temporary issue, as you have more officers, because obviously, being down staff contributes to overtime costs. But if you can speak to that.
I, I will speak to that. Lieutenant and I have had lots of conversations about what a, a miracle it would be if we could get up to full staff. I know that other agencies on 12-hour shifts have that opportunity. When they were up at full staff, you could get a notice. For example, there's a trial coming up this week, and instead of having the officer report at 8:00 in the morning to sit and wait to testify, and maybe there all day, and maybe part of another day, being able to change their shift and avoid that overtime. Right now, we just can't do that. So it's not, the overtime is not just because of the 12-hour shift. You know, court appearances, you know, call-outs, things like that, you know, it, it all adds up. We're also tasked with a lot of community events, special events, and, and we love that. But at the same time, you know, look, I mean, it's, it's expensive. Look at the Bennington Battle Day Parade, where I, I force everybody to come to work. And, and it's expensive, but it's a community event, and, and we love the Bennington Battle Day Parade. And more to come on the Bennington Battle Day stuff, but not today. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, there, there's a lot to overtime. And I know that Stu and Melissa go back and forth, because I see the notes. And, and Stu doesn't hide it. He, he brings me in, and, and, you know, and you. And, and we sit there, and we try to hash out what, what the realistic number is. And, and the number that we came up with this year isn't much different than what it was last year. But at the same time, if we're going to provide that level of coverage that you all want, I mean, you know, having, having the overtime line where it's at is, is absolutely necessary. And as we, perhaps as we, as we work towards getting back to full staff, could that change in years to come and, and drop back down to where it used to be? We're only talking a couple of points. I don't want people at home to think we're hiding it. But, you know, I mean, usually, we're at like 8% or 9%, or, or something to that effect. And this year, I believe, we asked for 10.2. So it is up slightly, but we, but we need, if, if we're going to provide that level of coverage that you all want, it, it did go up a little bit. But again, I want to keep in mind that we did stay below the 5%.
Other questions?
I just have a comment, and I want to follow through on what Jeanne said about the cost per call that you dispatched for the rescue squad. That's, that's the tip of the iceberg of the value of the data that you guys crunch. If you hadn't known that number today, it wouldn't have come up. And it didn't fall on deaf ears, obviously. I think that's a super-good indicator of why that data is so important to keep in the forefront of your mind. So keep doing it.
Well, thank you. And I just, again, to share with you, we appreciate the work that the Bennington Rescue Squad does, and, and the Polino Rescue Squad, and Arlington, and everybody that is working in the mutual aid system to help us out. But I share that with you, because it's the police budget that absorbs the brunt of that. And, and I, and I think it's, I think it's important that, you know, as the, as the rescue squad, whichever rescue squad, you know, is traveling out of town and doing transfers and, and things like that, I understand that perhaps they don't make the money that, that they need to make. But again, if, if they're going to stay in business, they have to absorb the costs of what it takes to run that business, and, and give some back to, to the police department. And, and that's, that's what I have for that. So I appreciate the comment.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Jeanne?
You know, we look at these numbers, the, the budgets, and they're numbers. But when you were talking about the dispatchers, and it's more than a number. I think there are real repercussions that could affect safety if the dispatchers are fatigued and overworked. And I, I just think we all need to remember, it's much more complicated than just numbers. There are real repercussions if people are overworked and not, not working up to the level that they need to be to keep everybody safe.
So I, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I will share with you, although a budget session, is sometimes people will call the chief or the lieutenant and say, oh, your, your dispatcher was rude. You know, when you call, and you're going on and on, and you're not answering the questions, and then the other phone line starts ringing, they have multiple phone lines. And when the 911 line lights up, they have to place you on hold. And some people think that they've been hung up on. And that's, that's, it's not about being curt. It's about, we've got to get to the emergency line. You can't figure out how to fill out your registration form? I'm sorry. We'll help you, but it's got to be on our time. And I can't tell you how many times, as the police chief, and I know the lieutenant has done it too, people will come down to the office and say, I can't figure out this registration form. So you go out there, and you sit at the desk, and you help them fill it out, right? We don't mind doing that. But you can't tie up the dispatcher because you can't figure out how to fill out a registration form when they have other calls, and, and then, and then call and complain and say, well, the dispatcher was rude and hung up on me. Because we, we record things. We listen. We listen to the recordings. And the dispatcher will say, I'm sorry, I need to place you on a hold. And, and they go right to hold, and the person's still talking. That, that's real. You, you call, I'm going to tell you something. You call the Bennington Police Department, you get a human. Why don't you call the, another state agency, and listen to the phone tree, and the buttons that you have to push, and things like that? We're not doing that here. I've said for years, we're not going to do that here. If you'd like to report a crime, press 3. Really? I mean, you get, you get, hello, Bennington Police Department, when you call us. You don't get a phone tree. And I think it's very important that people understand that that's the level of service that we want to provide. And if, and if we have to place you on a hold, then that's what has to happen. It is a busy, it's a busy call center. It's unbelievable how busy we've become. So thank you for that.
Other questions from select board?
Chief, didn't you share last year, didn't the state cut funding for the emergency shelter for Bennington County? Or, or work you were doing on it?
Emergency shelter.
You said where, where the shelter for Bennington County, Bennington is. And I thought there was funding you used to get that was cut back?
We, we, we haven't, Bennington, Bennington is the location for others in Bennington County to come in the event of a, of a critical event, such as the Mount Anthony Union Middle School. And we're, with our work with the emergency management plan, now that there's some air conditioning and stuff at the high school level, we have had conversations with them about sheltering there. But some of that would be ultimately our responsibility. But there, there hasn't been funding available. I mean, we're, we're trying to find funding for other projects right now, and it's just not there. But as far as cutting, I don't remember.
Okay, maybe, I just thought there was something either we usually got or didn't get that we didn't have this year. I guess the worry I've had for several years is hearing Bennington's going to be a hub for a lot of things in the county. Well, it's a lot more that's going to be put on the police department, and a lot of other groups that we fund in the town. And, and I think that's something everybody needs to be aware of. We have to have other towns in the county step up.
Nancy, let's stay with budget, though, okay?
It is budget. It is, it's going to impact the police department and other groups.
Okay. I want to move to the community, and then we're going to take a short break, since we've had no coffee, and we may all need to just get up and do jumping jacks. Anyone from the community have questions for the police department? Yes, please, Kelly. Please come over here to the podium and state your name, town of residence, and go with your question.
Good morning. Kelly Carroll, resident of Bennington. And I also chair Bennington's Community Policing Advisory Review Board. So I just want to be clear, I'm speaking myself and not on behalf of the board. So first of all, thank you to the Bennington Police Department for all that you do all year long. I've listened to the presentation today, I've looked at the budget numbers. And I think it's important to remember that things such as Project Alliance, BENSTAT, Situation Table, they're all extremely important components of community policing. And community policing is a little bit more expensive than traditional policing, as we try to get through that. One thing that I think that the Bennington Police Department has been really having to deal with the last couple of years, more so where it spiked, is the intersection of mental health and criminal justice. Nancy, I'd love to have an off-topic conversation with you about the state and some of the stuff that you mentioned earlier. I agree with a lot of it. When you look at that and you see the trauma that comes in, not only for the victims, or the, you know, the family members or the witnesses, but also for our first responders, and our, you know, our police department, our EMS, our fire department. And I think, you know, as I listen to talk about training, the clinician, and the analyst, I think that those are all really important aspects to consider with the budget, even though we are looking at increased cost. I commend you for trying to maintain less than 5%, although I do have concerns that the training budget is at 15. I know you haven't used that additional 3,500. But when I look at five possible FTEs, I'm not counting the injured reserve, but new hires possibly, there are expenses to that, and bringing on onboarding and training. I don't know where the onboarding expenses go. I know a lot of times, businesses will say it costs about $10,000 to bring on a new employee, but that's out of my expertise. So I think that we need to remember that. And I think that, I'm just not sure if it's enough. And I, I know in our meeting, and again, I'm not speaking for CPAR, but in our CPAR meeting in December, one thing that came up was CPAR training. And CPAR has no line item in the budget, so where is that going to go? And if that's going to be out of the general fund, then that's somebody else's budget. But if it is going to get allocated to BPD, then I think you should consider putting that 3,500 back in. When we talk about the crisis clinician, it did start with a partial grant. Unfortunately, things with the state don't always have a guarantee of continuing. And we've had a part-time crisis clinician. And if you've looked at the headlines the last year, you know that that is needed. We're very fortunate that BPD has been able to get a contract with UCS, so all of the officers have some, some time each year. That's something I believe they mandate. But when you look at some of the recent incidents that we've had, whether it's been with an axe, or, or just some stab, just really horrific stuff, I think it's important to have that person on staff, because you have to remember that healthy officers make healthy decisions. So I don't think that we should look at that purchase services line and trying to take that out. I also don't think that if you do look at that line and you agree to keep it, that the standard FTE level for the full-time equivalent number of officers that the police department has should be cut. I know that hasn't been a conversation today, but it has been something that I've heard a little bit. If we're going to add a clinician, let's cut officers. I do not think that that's a good idea. I attended that Situation Table training, that was a two-day training, and I had the fortunate opportunity to speak with one of the clinicians out of Burlington. They actually have six. Burlington had defunded their police to get those. This person strongly, strongly recommended against that. Do not cut their FTE level, put this in addition to it. And the analyst is important. When you talk about information for BENSTAT or Situation Table, it is something that's very time-consuming. And right now, a lot of that responsibility does fall on the lieutenant. And I have to wonder, while he's crunching all the numbers, is there something else that he would probably be better to be doing for part of his job, and having the analyst to do all of that? So I encourage you to keep those in the, the line items in there, and to consider the training budget. If you have not had the opportunity to go over to the police department and actually witness what those communications specialists do, I encourage you to do that. It is amazing, and I absolutely have no doubt that I could not do that. There are screens everywhere. There are tones and rings. I mean, it's crazy. And that, that, the fact that there's one person on the weekends is very concerning, because one thing that I heard consistently through Project Alliance training, and the Situation Training, Table trainings, we have a lot of phenomenal agencies locally, but not all of them are 24/7. Some of them are just business hours. And when that business hour passes, there's a gap, and people call the police department. So I think that we need to take a look at what they're doing in a supportive and positive way, and give them the tools that they need to do it accurately and safely. And then one question that I do have, I think I know the answer to it, but I'm going to ask the chief anyway. The $14,000 that went for the used vehicles that went to auction, that, that, you know what I mean? You talked about the $14,000. Did that go to, against, offset BPD's budget, or does that go back into the general fund?
That money was utilized by our finance director to help offset the costs of our new buildings on Orchard Road.
Oh, excellent. So it got to stay with you.
Which is absolutely the right thing to do.
Okay. So, that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. I, I just want to be, I, I appreciate Kelly's comments, and I think it's also really important to say that this board, for at least the last decade,
to say that this board, for at least the last decade that I'm aware of, has been very supportive of the police department. And I think what we want to make sure is that you have the tools you need and the funding you need within what the taxpayers can support to do the work that you need to do. I am not aware of any discussion on budget of removing an officer. We've added to the budget there. So I think that's, I don't want anyone to be concerned about that because that is not, that's not our intent. So I appreciate you saying that, Kelly.
That is something that I've heard out in the community when people have been discussing the budget. And I just don't think that that is something that we should do.
Oh.
Not hear it from the select board.
Okay.
But it is something that I have heard out in the community. If we're going to do that, let's just cut officers. And I just don't think that that's --
Okay. Okay. So, okay, so that's good to hear. I'm not hearing that, and I think, and I think, you know, as we have witnessed repeatedly, the community as a whole really appreciates both the work and the direction that the police department is going in.
And wants us to be fully staffed.
Yeah, and wants us to be fully staffed. And, yeah. All right. So, anyone else? Anyone else from the community? Yes. Shirley. I'm sorry. I'm slow on the uptake this morning.
Shirley Adams, Bennington. I recognize that this is a budget meeting, and I don't want us to take up time, but I'd appreciate it if perhaps the chief or the appropriate people could come back at a regular select board meeting and talk to us about BENSTAT, Situation Table, Project Alliance. I don't know a lot about those, and it sounds interesting, so I just wanted to ask for that.
Yep. It should be part of your quarterly, yeah.
Yes.
Which is due, I think.
Yes, I was, that was how I was going to close this, so we just closed it. We would like the opportunity, the lieutenant and I, and I have, I promised that he can have at least 15 minutes of my 20, to speak to all of you. We do have some projects coming up that we're going to need your help with, and we're going to be looking for some support. But I do agree that maybe the community needs to know a little bit more about the projects that we're currently working on to keep the community safe. I also want to share with you that anytime we can get grant funding, we are doing our best. We are replacing everyone's body armor at the police department for obvious reasons with a higher threat level, and people have been fitted for that. And with the support of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, I know that people sit here and say, "Oh, it's an insurance company." But they are good to us, and we just, we received a $5,000 grant from them as well as money from the federal government to replace body armor. And so we are getting new body armor, and 50% of that was either paid for by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns or the federal grant. So that worked out for us, and Stu was supportive of that spending. We just didn't tell Melissa. Just kidding. Melissa's very well aware of it, so, just kidding about that.
Okay. On that note, let's take a 10-minute break and do some jumping jacks. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're not getting coffee. Thanks to the chief very much for making coffee that I understand will keep us all awake.
That's pretty strong, Stu.
That is very, very, very much appreciated. And we're having a moment of show and tell on the Brooklyn Bridge repairs that were Which has certainly made us all much safer. Okie dokie. So, next up is highway. So RJ, introduce yourself and give us the overview of what we should be looking at.
I am RJ Jolly. Good morning. I'm the Director of Public Works, which makes me the head of water sewer and highway departments. So I do have the highlights. I have like 30 bullets that either we're deducting or adding to the budget this year. I'm just over 5%, which Stu explained earlier that most of it's due to insurance costs and the 5% for pay. So we did do some additions and subtractions in the budget, but it pretty much is level for work to be done. We're definitely the biggest construction maintenance business in town. We have, we have another labor this year. We have. And we also have a bridge superintendent that works under me that I just shared with you some of the work in the Brooklyn Bridge, some of the steel that had to be cut out and replaced, and we did a lot of concrete work there. If you've driven by, I'm sure you noticed. Yeah, it was, it was really deteriorating pretty heavy due to lack of bridge maintenance for years. You know, we didn't have our own crew. Now we have a superintendent and three guys that work under him, supervisor. Yeah, we replaced a bridge on Morgan Street Extension this year, which was a big undertaking for Highway Department. New bridge abutments, deck approaches went very well. And we did it for, I think the estimate was around 450 for a contractor to come in, and we did it for $83,000, including rentals for equipment, you name it. Everything went into that, $83,000. So we did. It's so much cheaper for us to do this work in-house. So we added some, added some money into the bridge budget this year. We plan on bridging the culvert up by the ledges on Mount Anthony Road. That's very dangerous. There's a bend in the road. It's narrow. There's broken guardrails. And we plan on bridging that whole area to make the road 20 feet wide, and so there'll be no corner, no danger anymore. So that's one project. And then Murphy Road by the paper mill-covered bridge, there's another concrete bridge just past that. That needs some major repairs. The steel is very rusted, and a lot of the concrete's rotten. So we plan also doing that work this summer for the bridges. Mechanic working out, like Paul mentioned, prior to myself. Same thing happened before I told the board, before we got a fleet manager, I said, "The only problem with hiring a person right now, it'll be tough to prove how much money he's saving," because I honestly think that parts have gone up 80 to 100% since we were in discussion about hiring him, and that has happened. So we're saving a lot in the 680 budget section. The work we used to send out and have other garages fix, although parts are through the roof, so it's not like it's an even wash. So there isn't much we can do about that. We did buy some used equipment this year. With having a person in a garage that can fix stuff, that gives us the option. We don't have to buy new, new, new anymore. We, sidewalk machine, just for example, with the attachment sits around over $200,000. And, you know, it sits most of the time, so that's a tough pill for me to swallow. So we found one up in Maine. We went and got it. Luckily, for $10,000, we, it is much better shape than the one we had, and that was the same year, and that was a home run. So we have $10,000 into something that if we budgeted would have been over $200,000. So having a mechanic in-house is saving us on that, saving us a lot of money there also. So those two new positions greatly are saving our budget. If you'd like me to, I can go down through for all the changes, all the bullets I put together, or we can discuss.
Do you want to let us know what you, what's on the horizon that you think you'll need that you might have put in a budget this year, if, you know, if you could have, or?
I'm pretty pleased with the budget. We cut the projects, the blacktopping.
Yep.
This year, we're going to take some of the money out of the reserves and make up some of that, so we get some paving done. This should be my year, I'm told by the state, that we get $200,000 for paving this year. That'll help also. So if we get that $200,000, we should be over 5 miles. Our roads are in pretty good shape. We don't have a lot of potholes. And if we do, there's a reason for that. We know there's going to be lead lines replaced and digging up the blacktops, so what, you know, it would just be egg on our face to try to pave a road that's going to be dug up two months later. So if roads were off, chances are it's going to be, there's going to be excavation done to replace lead lines, services going into houses. So that's what we're doing with projects. That's a big number there. But hopefully we get state money and we put that, more money towards the bridges like So our bridge, our bridge budget is $169,000 for this budget we're speaking of today. That's enough money to put a new bridge, an abutment on Mount Anthony Road, and it's also enough money to fix what needs to be done on Murphy Road. That's where the $169,000 number came from. And that'll all be done in-house. We did budget this year. This is something new. I believe, missing the note right now, I believe we agreed to $20,000 to put in the budget to buy used vehicles, used equipment, you know, stuff that we don't rely on that, you know, all year round, that's going to hold up a whole crew if it breaks down. So not only do we sell stuff on Auctions International, we've been pretty lucky in buying stuff from different municipalities also. So we're capable of doing that now with our fleet manager.
Is there anything we should know about reserves that, that, you know, I see we're increasing the reserve for bridge projects? That's for, that's moving money to the reserve? 5240.840?
Stu, do you want to explain? I can explain it, but I may be not as accurate as you can explain.
I'd be glad to jump in. Yes. Essentially, what we're doing is, last year, we budgeted $100,000 to transfer to reserve. This year, we're increasing it by $69,000. However, that cost, that 169 is practically the cost of the two projects that we plan to do. So even though the money is budgeted to be transferred to reserve, the only thing that will go to reserve is anything that might be left over after those projects are done.
Got it. Can I ask then, so I thought we were reducing the blacktopping budget. We're doing fewer miles of roadway to help offset the bridge, so?
We cut, we cut the highway paving expenditure by $100,000 and plan to pull those funds from the reserve so that we're able to do the three to five miles of road that we would hope to do. So we reduced that portion of the budget so that we could increase the bridge portion of the budget. You will note that we increased not only the repair and maintenance supply line item, but we also increased the transfer to reserve. And I will note here that RJ has just indicated to me, and this is the second time he's said it, that he's fairly certain that he'll get a grant for $200,000 for paving costs from the state of Vermont. If that is in fact, does come true, depending on how the expenditures line up, it will certainly reduce the amount to be raised by taxes by that amount of money. And that may reduce his 7.9% increase down to something closer to 4.
All right.
And that's, those are speculative, and that's why we don't include them.
Okay. And that's, and so RJ, you're saying that it's sort of, one year you get favored and then you don't get favored for a number of years for this money?
Yeah, it's quite a few years. It's definitely broken out in Bennington County and depending on a whole, whole number of things. But yeah, AOT decides where the money goes. And they have a very small budget still. May not be real accurate, but I think they have $500,000 to use in Bennington County for Class II paving. So that doesn't go far when the top is 200. So luckily, we've been long enough without a paving grant that we should, we should get near the full this year. But yeah, they, you know, there's not a lot of money in their budget also to share, so, but this should be our year, I'm hoping.
Historically, with District 1, which is the Bennington County region, they try to parcel out those funds so that every town gets something, either bridge funds or paving funds. The state allocates those funds from their budget to the, what are there, eight districts in the state, something along those lines. And District 1 is, tries to be very fair over the years so that those funds flow to all of the communities within the district.
Questions?
I've got bridge questions.
Okay.
So there's $64,500 in for engineering study or work to be done on the Brooklyn Bridge?
Yes.
It's what?
That is, that is in the flood wall. It's part of the river restoration. I don't think, is that, I don't think that's in the highway fund, is it?
Where is that?
Oh, I'm looking at bridges. We're not doing bridges. I thought we were talking bridges.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me see.
What page are you on?
Page 13.
Okay.
Under construction of bridges, 5240, 560.
There's 60.
Oh, sorry, 22. 220.
Yeah, that's repair and maintenance supplies.
Well, no, where am I looking? Someplace I had it.
Yeah. You will note that in prior years, we budgeted much less for repair and maintenance supplies. This year, we jumped it substantially because we are using our personnel to do the work. So we're buying the materials and putting them in place with our personnel. So that, that amount of money, $68,000, is an increase over past budgets, which were $1,000. So there's a $67,000 increase there, a $69,000 increase in the reserve or transfer to reserve so that we can do these two bridge projects this year.
Okay. So all the money, nothing is going towards the bridge reserve, then?
Well, what is left over? We have an estimate put together by our personnel that projects the cost for the repair of those bridges. By placing the money in the transfer to reserve column, if it doesn't cost us that much, whatever is left over goes to reserve. And it's just not, it doesn't fall back into the fund balance. It has actually moved into a reserve to increase the bridge reserve that we have.
But for the bridge on Main Street by Miller's Toll, is our local share 5% or 10%?
That's 5% for the Miller's Toll.
And we have just over $300,000 in? And we have just over 300,000 in the reserve?
Currently, yes.
And is that going to cover that 5%?
I don't know what the new bid is. Initially, the bid came in really high, so the state rejected the bids. And I understand there may be a new bid that's out there. I haven't heard what it was. Initially, we were going to be able to cover what was the estimate the state had put together. It was much less than the 300,000 for the 5%. But the bid came in very, very high, so they're rebidding it. And I'm not sure what the outcome is. We haven't heard from the state since they redid the project. I think they're planning to go forward, start the project this fall instead of last fall. So, in the year 2025, they'll be starting the project, finishing up in 2026. They originally hoped to go in 2024 and 2025, but the bids were too high. Only one company bid.
And what about Depot Street? Because the state?
Depot Street is our bridge. I don't believe the state participates or the federal government participates in that. And that's one of the bridges that we hope to be able to do for a lot less money than what the original estimate was.
But the state, and the state pointed that out in 2021, right?
Yes, it's one of the bridges that's in fair condition, fair to poor.
Fair to poor, so how many years can that go?
I don't know, RJ.
I'm just trying to figure out how many bridges we have to get to.
No, I know. That one's on hold. That one's on hold for many reasons. Mostly, we got a grant for that. We still have an open grant for Depot Street, which is also 200,000. I'm not sure if we got the max or not. But if you get these bridge grants, there's, it's federal money. And to get federal money, it'll probably cost the town four times more than, than they give you to jump through the hoops they require. So, at this point, we're waiting on a contractor to, the state said, well, you can't build that bridge unless it's exact, exactly built the way it's constructed back in 1926. So, okay. We are, we did plan on making the bridge look identical. We had plans for it. And they said, well, the way it's formed underneath, it's kind of a long story that we could bring up some other time. But to make it short, it was going to cost us a lot more years, a lot more time. The contractor said, okay, we'll design it exactly like the bridges now. And it's still in their court to come up, to please the state and the federal requirements.
So, do we have like six or seven bridges in town? I'm just trying to figure out total, how many we have to address?
We have 32 bridges.
No, but ones that we know we have to put work on that are fair, fair to poor condition?
We replaced the one that was in the worst shape this summer and in which we were not aware of. The state does a bridge inspection every two years and we get the report. Everybody can see it online now. And that was by far the most dangerous bridge we had, or the worst shape. That looked like a food colander, had so many holes in the beams. So, yeah, the bridges just over the years, you know, if you don't fall in the brook, you don't really address them, you know. You kind of look underneath them and, but, and you look at the reports. But we, we certainly have, we're in good shape. Actually, we're in very good shape. Is Depot Street going to fall in, in three years? No. Worst case, there's going to be holes in the deck that we have to patch. And we've done that prior to, when I came here 15 years ago, they were replacing holes in the deck. So, it's not like it's danger by any means. But, yeah, they wanted it wider. They wanted all kinds of historic things done. The state just stopped. Yes, we got the grant from one agency, but then the other agency just threw the brakes on. So, we've been a couple of years trying to.
I'm just thinking with the 300,000 we have in reserve, do we have enough as all these smaller bridges come up? I mean, I don't know what Main Street's going to cost. As you said, it shouldn't be much.
Well, it's, no, it's going to, it's going to, 5% of that, 5% of that won't eat up the entire 300,000. But we don't know what that cost will be because unless, unless the state gets more competitive bidding process, we may find ourselves using more of that money than we anticipated.
Kim, so I think, just to clarify, so this year, we've got Murphy Road and Mount Anthony Road bridges to do. When you look at your list of bridges and their, what shape they're in, what will be, what do you anticipate being the bridges that we'd want to address next year and the year after? And I think that's sort of where Nancy's going, is do we need to increase reserves to, for bridges so that we don't get walloped next, next year?
We're doing a lot of maintenance also on bridges now. You know, we're painting them, we're stripping them down, we're replacing a couple of bad I-beams, whatever. You know, we're sealing them, we're putting concrete seal around them, pressure washing them. So, a lot of our bridges are going to last much longer due to this maintenance. No, I think we're fine with just the approach we're taking now. But it's a good thing we're taking this approach with the bridge crew and maintenance.
All right. So, you're not recommending that we increase the amount to reserves? And I, you know, I'm asking these questions, I'm not saying that like we can do anything about that in the budget, but.
That's it.
But it, but, but, you know, it's, rather than having a surprise next year that we've got a bridge that we didn't anticipate needing to do significant repairs on, is there, are you, are you feeling comfortable with the level of reserves? Or, you know, should, if, if we had a windfall, you know, should we be doing more?
I will say, we are not even close to having enough money to fix bridges if we do the work by a contractor or out of our.
Okay.
With the program we put together this year, we absolutely are in good shape with the way we're going about it. You know, 83,000, 85,000 to replace a full bridge. You know, it was 30 foot span, I believe. I was looking for Steve, my concrete guy. Okay. Yeah, I think it's 32 feet. It's pretty impressive for what we can do in-house without spending a lot of money. So, I'm fine with the way the budget is with the reserves.
Yes, Clark?
Hi, RJ. Good to see you again. So, I just want to clear some, clear something in my own mind. I understand, you said that for the Depot Street Bridge, we had received some sort of federal funding for that bridge that's on hold and that you were under the impression, or maybe I thought this, but you said that the constraints or, that might be placed on how that bridge is constructed would generate expenses greater than the grant we hold?
Oh, by far.
Okay, so.
See, see, this, I don't, even if we're replacing a big bridge like the Brooklyn Bridge, for example, the state only has $200,000 for municipalities out there if you're lucky enough to get that grant. They don't have a bridge program that, I say that, but Pepper Mill's a whole different thing. It's on a state highway, so they take the ball and run with it. And those, the town's only responsible for that 5% cost. But our normal bridges that are on a state highway, yes, there's $200,000 available if you're lucky enough to get the grants, which that's a tough, that's a tough process to get grants for that because every town needs box culverts to replace their old deteriorating culverts that are 24-inch culvert and the state says, yeah, you got to upgrade that to a 10-foot box. You know, so there's 100 grand there for Shasberry or Poundle. You know, they need 100 grand just to replace what used to be a 24-inch culvert with a big box, concrete box. So, very, a lot of competition in that category nowadays. So, not a lot of money out there, help from the state. So, the way we're approaching it is we pretty much designed the bridge from old prints we have. We have a, we have a library of old blueprints. We go above and beyond what, how it was designed back in 19, whenever it was built. We, we do a lot of planning. We make sure we feel very comfortable in what we're doing. Steve has 40-some years of concrete, not so much in bridges, but we've looked at a lot of bridges. So, so we have no engineering costs. We have no, no subcontractor costs except for like a crane. Depot Street, or Morgan Street, we, we poured the precast deck over on Orchard Road and we trucked it to the site, so that saved time, saved time for the road closure. I believe the road is only closed for six weeks, which is very impressive for a full bridge replacement. So, we can build better, a lot cheaper in-house, and we can really afford to do the alternate route. I think we only had to hire a truck to help us get the beams there quick enough so the, we weren't holding up the crane in a crane to set them. We pretty much did everything else except for the guardrails in-house. So, that's why the, and the guardrails, I think, shooting from the hip, were $28,000 out of that, 85,000, whatever the grand total was. So, you know, we can do a lot efficient in-house and save hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on bridges.
Okay, so another, it's better for us to do this on our own than to count on our federal money to do it then, so?
Yeah, because actually, federal money, you need, first thing you have to do is hire an engineer, get it designed, spend 200, 300,000 on that, and there goes your grant, more than your grant, just in designing it, so.
Again, just to restate what I've heard multiple times about the town employees, thank you. Thank you very much.
No, we have a great, great, very talented crew.
Other questions on highway? Anyone in the public who would like to ask a question? No? Well, we are feeling like we're in good hands, I do believe. And if we should be sending Valentines to someone for the 200,000 grant, let us know.
We probably appreciate donuts or something. Yeah, District One, yeah. Yeah, no, we should be good. We, I, we should be good on that grant this year.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Question though first, Stu, on that.
Can RJ leave or is it different?
Well, I think the town's going to do it if that's what happens, that pathway grant?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm going to find the number of it.
Yeah.
Page 12. What does it say? 363, 354, 760?
Say that again?
I'm looking for it on here. Page 12 under projects. 514560, am I looking at the right thing or no?
No, the project is basically our paving and street repair.
Okay, where does it show the pathway?
The pathway shows up, I believe, in the recreation budget having to do with pathways.
All right, so then let's, let's let RJ leave because the next section.
Is the town doing it? Okay.
No, no, it's not, because the next section is anything other.
That's not in my budget, that's.
It's not his budget. So, anything, so the next, the next, so thank you, RJ.
Thank you.
And, and the next section, section is, that we're talking about is anything else, general fund or any other departments? So, recreation is where that's coming up and we're looking for it, right?
Yeah, we, I mean, the pathway project, and maybe, Dan, you might want to jump to the table at this point. The pathway project for which we received additional grant funds this past year is the completion of what's called currently the Ninja Path. We haven't budgeted any, any taxpayer funds to spend on that project. So, we'll be looking to use the grant monies to continue to complete that project. There's no, no impact on, on the budget from a taxpayer perspective, so it is not shown here.
So, maybe Nancy, because I know you had mentioned this question before, and maybe I can address it. You were concerned about the match for the funds that we just recently received for future phases of the Ninja Pathway? I assume that's what you're requesting. So, one of the things that we're doing, we have been, we have been in discussions with the state of Vermont to put together a proposal for what's called force account work. And what force account work is, is the town of Bennington does the work, makes, does the project with their own crews, purchases of materials, does the work, and then the state then pays the town for those, for those costs. So, it actually conceivably, we are still working out the details, it may be that we can actually receive more than our out-of-pocket costs if we do the work ourselves. And then whatever we receive in addition to our out-of-pocket costs could then be, hopefully, given, allocated for match for future phases of the project that we are unable to do ourselves. Now, that's all a work in progress. I'm meeting with the engineers next week, I believe, to talk about what phases of the project makes sense for the town to take on with its, its own crews and what phases may make more sense for us to contract out through the state bidding process. And then we're going to have to, we're going to put together a proposal to the state and see what they will or won't accept. So, that's all in the works, but it is, it has no impact on the current budget.
Okay, but in the grant that was in our packet in the fall.
Yes.
We received nearly $2 million.
That's correct.
And we had a 10% local match, correct?
That's correct.
So, if we say, well, the town does it, well, we'll be, you know, our town employees are going to get paid. They're not going to get paid by the state, we'll be paying them, correct?
Well, that's, that's, that's the beauty of possible, possibly of this force account is that we might, we may be able to recover the actual cost to the town for paying our employees at least. We have to, that's all part of the discussion, is how much can we charge or should we charge or are we allowed to charge to the state and federal government for the work of our employees? So, is it just a straight assumed amount? Can we, can we put in a, do we have overhead that we can, can we charge? All those things have to be worked out with the state. This is a very unique process that they don't do very often. But we're willing to put in the work to try to make this happen because it is allowed by federal law.
Okay, but my worry is if it's nearly $2 million, the state is going to have us, I would think, pay most of that 10, you know, 10%, regardless of what happens. So, nothing's going to happen on this until when?
So, we don't, there is no, there is no proposed budget impact for any of the future phases at this time. If we are able to put together a force account project that is net neutral or even a positive to the town, then we may proceed in the next fiscal year. But if there's a, if there's a significant budget, budget impact, we won't be able to until we budget in future years.
So, when you put something together, it's going to come right to the board?
Well, it'll go, it'll first go to the state to make sure that they actually think that we can do it. And then it'll have to be approved through the, whether it's the town manager or the board, that'll be Stuart's call whether that requires town or select board approval. board approval, because we already have, we already have the approval from the select board to do the project, and if there's no budgetary impact, I don't know what level of select board approval is required.
I think, I think Nancy, if we're able to do, we'll probably come to you and brag about it.
Yeah, we absolutely will. I just didn't, I just don't know what the formal, I don't think there's a formal approval process to do a project that's already been approved that won't cost the taxpayers any money. Obviously, we'd want to inform everyone.
Well, I'm thinking about the 400,000, the 10%,
Yeah.
and I think, however you get it worked out, we need to know what the local cost is going to be at the end of the day before it goes forward, to see if we can give approval.
Absolutely. If there's any budget impact, that would have to come before the board.
And, did I read last year, did we also go out up on Mount Anthony for a grant?
I'm not aware, that maybe, there may have been a highway department grant, application, but I'm not aware of a Mount Anthony.
So, this is a budget hearing, so I want to make sure that as we move forward, that the questions we're asking are, like, we're looking at where it impacts the budget. This is for the budget that starts next July, and so I think, let's just be clear about that.
Nancy, there was a, I did apply for a bridge grant.
Oh, I don't know who put the, for Mount Anthony?
Yeah, for the same bridge I spoke of.
Oh, no, this wasn't a bridge. I'm talking up on Mount Anthony, up where SBC is, up, the trails or something.
No, we, we.
That wasn't for a tower or something?
Uh, there is, the Bennington Trail.
There was some discussion about possibly seeking approval from the current property owner, and then seeking grants for an observation tower, but that is not proceeding.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to keep track. I don't know what we have out for grants. I'm trying to look down the road to see what local costs are going to be.
So, let's make sure that, I mean, there are lots of things discussed, and so, part of, I think, the, the, the push-pull tension, and Nancy, you brought it up a bunch, that you want to know what people might be thinking of to do, but then you have to, you have to keep a ledger, so you know what's sort of like a potential that might come to fruition, and what actually comes to fruition, so that we're not sitting here saying, well, weren't you going to apply for a grant? That's, we're looking at a budget right now. So, I think, you know, for your own, you know, I keep a notebook, and I keep those sorts of things in it, so that you can come back and say, okay, what are we looking at down the road? But you want to be sure that you're, that you're not mixing apples and oranges here. Okay?
We, we have in our packet in the fall, we get the grant of nearly $2 million, we have a 10% local share.
That's a different, that's not Mount Anthony, and, and what, what just happened was Dan just got up here, the assistant town manager just shared with us the exact process that he's going through, what the next steps are, and that if it's, you know, if there's any cost to the taxpayers, obviously, it comes to the select board, because we have, we have to, we have to okay that or not. So, you've just, question asked, question answered.
I would ask that if it's on this budget, can we just be told the page number and line number that you're, that you're referring to, Nancy?
Well, it isn't in this budget.
I thought not.
Okay, oh, okay, sorry. Okay. All right, so, other, other things that are general fund, or other, that are, that haven't been addressed yet, that we want to address? I have a question. I'm wondering, and I'm not sure I could give, maybe it's under administrative services, but it may also be under community development. I'm not sure exactly how the salary lines work there. But I am, we've talked a little bit about looking for some administrative help for some departments that are, that we're seeing increased job responsibilities. One of those is, we just tasked HR with ethics, with the new ethics law, and how that might impact that workload. We've seen a substantial increase in public records requests, and I am still concerned about administrative costs there. I, there, and then, I think, we also have, we had $8 million come in in community development, not counting the ARPA funds, and there's a lot of administrative there. And, so I guess, just a general question is, do, does community, does communication coordinator, HR, and community development, do they have administrative help? And is it sufficient? And what do you see on the horizon in terms of how their time will be spent if they don't have appropriate administrative?
Well, at the present time, the communications coordinator and the community development director have not asked for any, any additional help. They use Beth as their primary administrative assistant, and I specifically did talk with Jonah about additional help due to the potential increase in public records requests, and he said, not at this time, he doesn't see the need for it. So, we've not proposed any changes there. As you know, we have, we have moved the human resources department into the administrative services account, I've highlighted it here, and in so doing, we have reallocated a, one of our staff people, Tammy Roy, to be an assistant to Michelle. That was done because of the amount of work she's carrying, workload she's carrying now. We have no way to project what that new workload might be with the ethics issues that the legislature has, has now created for us. So, we may be talking to you next year about that, but we don't anticipate any additional help in either of those offices for this next fiscal year.
Okay. Can I, can I ask? Oh, go ahead, Clark.
I heard the discussion of the community development issues, and I see on page 14, or question page four, item number 3650-100. My question is, what's the staffing level in there? How many FTEs are in that department that fall under this?
Currently, in the community development department, the cost, salary costs there cover Jonah and Shannon, community development director and the communications coordinator.
Okay, I didn't realize they were one in, one department.
Yeah.
And I know I touched on this in the past briefly, in terms of, I just heard numbers of, what, 8 million in community grants have come through that office in the last year or so? Did I hear that correctly?
Two years.
The last two years. And, as I said, my, my previous employment, there were significant federal grant monies that went into this organization, that our overseeing element actually collected an administrative slash management fee to process or handle those grants. And I'm wondering if that's something we may not want to revisit if we're looking at additional positions or requirements for those positions?
We, we do now request, or use, from, from the administrative cost potential, we take in enough cost to offset the single audit costs associated with, because once you exceed a certain amount of federal dollars in your community, you are required to perform a single audit through your, your auditors. And so, we have begun to pull that cost out of some of these grants that we are receiving and achieving for other, other units, other corporations.
Oh, yeah, okay. And my concern was if, in fact, we're looking at potentially increasing the number of employees, or increase in the, what would be the payroll, and is maybe, we consider that as an option to kind of balance that out?
I think, I think it's a good point, Clark, in the future, if, if in fact, we were to be in to look at the need for more employees, then some of that administrative cost, we ought to come out of the grant work. I agree.
I have a question on the treasurer. I'm on page two of 15. Do I recall in the, in history that that position paid significantly more at one point?
No.
No.
The treasurer's position has always been a part-time position with the town, and it may have been held by a, a town employee as the treasurer, but he's also working in the collections department, that kind of thing. So, it's, it's, it's always been considered a part-time position, going back before my time as manager.
And the salary that's earmarked for that has, is market rate, or whatever we think it is?
It's set by the board.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, you, whether or not this is a market rate, I don't, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
I'll have questions about that.
Okay. All right, other questions? Yes?
On page two, under information technology, the increase, the total increase is 6.12%. I'm thinking that we may still be playing catch-up with technology, and that, and that eventually, it'll level out once we kind of get up to speed.
Some of it is catch-up, some of it is reallocation of funds, where some of the communication funds might be in the police department, or in the highway department, or somewhere else. Those are all being reallocated into the information technology department, where, where that individual has a direct impact on those costs, and he can form an agreement with, with whatever technology companies we're dealing with. In fact, we just have renegotiated an agreement with a new tech company that's going to actually save us some money. So, that's what's happening there. Part of it is catch-up, new equipment, new things, but a lot of it is just, we're reallocating from other parts of the budget, so there are decreases elsewhere in the budget that end up increasing this one.
That's why I'm looking at, it went from 31,000 to 304,000 in a couple of years, it's money being switched over from another department?
We created a new position. Part of that, part of that is, is the salary for the information technology salary and benefits. So, that is a new position that we created. But all, much of the rest of that cost is being pulled from other departments and reallocated to his, his budget.
Yeah, page one. 2710, park improvements, 102,669.
Are you looking, what are you looking at?
Under the general fund, park improvements.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. That's pennies for park.
I realized that, but that money's all gone.
It's, it's been committed to the skate park. It's not gone yet, hasn't been spent.
When I look down below there, 27, I'm sorry, 2917000, transfer for rec improvements, I saw that for last year, there's nothing else.
No, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't transferred any funds from the recreation budget into that particular line item. But we have, we have a reserve for pennies for parks that is generated from the tax.
Does this show on here any place where the money was spent to fix the tennis courts?
Uh.
In the reserve?
Well, because this is.
No, it should have showed up in the budget.
It, it won't show up in, in this budget unless you just look at an expenditure from last year, and we don't, we don't try to detail those expenditures here. You're looking at, when you look at last year's budget, you're looking at the actual expenditure through the fourth, fourth month of the year, period four.
Oh, we did that this year, after July?
Um, I, I can't remember, Nancy, whether we were just before or just after July.
I think it was April. It was, it was early spring, when it was.
Yeah.
No, I believe it's an FYI '25, because we had confusion about that. I think it's FYI '25, not FYI '25.
Yeah, but that's an FYI '25 expenditure, it wouldn't be detailed in that kind of detail here.
Okay, down below miscellaneous income for seniors, 295000.
Yeah.
What's that money used for?
Uh, they, the seniors raise money through the sale of items that are donated to them, or through the sale of tickets for trips. Those funds are placed into a reserve on an annual basis, and then they are used to offset the cost of new programs, or instructors for those programs, so that, that's been the process in the past. So, that's why that, that line item is there.
Anyone in the public have questions? General questions?
I just want to say, I'm learning a lot about reserves. Thank you. Lot, lot of information.
Well, it seems like it is a very useful tool.
Very useful and normal part of it, yeah.
Keeping our, keeping our tax rate in check.
Yeah.
Okay, anything, anything else?
Yes, I do, I have several things.
Oh, okay, Nancy, please, just say it.
Page seven, solid waste management.
What page?
Page seven, solid waste management, 5430, 561, the 94,000 to the BCRC, and then above, purchase services.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, can you explain?
Yes, we, we contract with the BCRC to operate, they are the operator for the alliance, which is a 13-town consortium that operates the solid waste management district for the county. Bennington has the highest population, it is a per capita cost, and therefore, we pay into the BCRC to offset whatever their costs are to, to manage the solid waste district. It includes the cost to operate our portion of the new household hazardous waste facility, which is constructed at Houghton Lane. So, that's what that, that money goes to.
And above that, the other purchase service, 23,000?
Uh, the other purchase services in that particular account covers wood chipping, a portion of the wood chipping, tip fees for the town of Bennington from our garbage collection at, on the streets, that we, we do ourselves from our buildings, and that we take to the transfer station itself. What else does it cover? There are a number of, a number of small expenses that the town has to operate that transfer station. We, we run the wood pile, we run the metal pile, there are costs associated with that that are also part of that, other purchase services cost in that budget. It comes up to a total of 23,000 on an annual basis.
And then, we're paying 83,000 for recycling?
That's true.
And the money we're charging where people take brush to the landfill?
Right, right now, the people of Bennington recycle for free. We, we pay, we contract with Casella to move that material to their MRF facility, and that's, that's a part of what the town does for the taxpayers of Bennington. So, that cost is the cost to move those recyclables that are put at the transfer station out to the appropriate location where they can be properly sorted and recycled.
But the taxpayers are paying 83,000 for it?
Yes.
Okay.
But the individual taxpayer doesn't pay when they take the recycling to the.
And how does it work? So, it's free for us to go to the recycling center?
That's right.
And we pay for it as a service in our general taxes?
That's right.
And what you're charging people that take brush to the landfill?
Uh, I don't know what the brush charge is off the top of my head now, because it changes on an annual basis, but yes, people, people will pay to, commercial people pay to dump brush. The average homeowner, I don't believe, is charged.
That's correct.
To dump brush.
This board did that.
We did that, and it, we can bring a, a big garbage can full of, yeah.
Yeah.
Page eight, under parks and recreation, recreation administration, 71, 340 communications. What, we used to pay for everybody in recreation to have a phone, why has that all disappeared?
Can you say that again? Used to pay what?
I think that's what.
I don't know what you're talking.
We would pay for people to use telephones, people who. We would pay for people to use telephones, people work for the rec center, or the Y, they would have telephones, is that what that's for?
The communication line generally is for, yes, phone communications, it generally would cover contracts with Comcast or other organizations that would supply media contacts and communication opportunities, yes.
It's not newsletter?
And we don't pay that anymore under the administration. The administrative account in recreation is purely the costs to contract with the Y for the programs and the opportunities that they provide for us. The lease payments there go to the Bennington Sports Center, because we are performing programs there for our residents and for others who pay to use those programs. So the one forty-four is the administrative cost, it's $12,000 a month. The twenty-seven thousand that you see there is what we pay to subsidize the children of Bennington to use the summer camp, and I believe in my notes I indicate there was 674 children served this year in their summer camp. And then we have a small contingency amount for operating supplies, where we would replace something that might break down that is not their responsibility. So those are the costs that you see for administration. Other costs throughout this budget are costs that our buildings and grounds folks use to operate the parks, to keep the pool operational.
Recreation administration?
Yes.
It's a total of $207,000, the taxpayers are paying?
Two oh eight.
Two oh eight, they're supposed to be paying one forty-four.
Well, I just explained that, Nancy.
I heard you explain it, but that's, were you able...
We are paying, we pay, we contract with the Y for one forty-four.
Mm-hmm.
We pay rent to the Bennington Sports Center for thirty-six thousand.
Okay, so question on there, did the select board have to approve that lease before you signed it?
I don't, we may have talked about the lease, but I signed it. I don't know whether it was presented to the...
No, but I just didn't know if there was the discussion.
I can't remember.
And I don't understand, I don't understand the charge to the taxpayers, the twenty-seven thousand?
That is something this board decided many years ago, when we first started talking with the Y, one of the things that we decided was that we wanted to make sure that every single child in this community had access to recreational opportunities. So if you look at page six of the Cliff Notes, it does say that we, at $29 a pop, we subsidize 674 kids from Bennington, so that every child has an opportunity to have recreational opportunities, and I will absolutely, absolutely encourage anyone that thinks that's a bad idea to share it, but that is something we should be very, very, very proud of, that every child that wants the opportunity can have the opportunity, it just doesn't matter if they don't have any money.
Membership rates, the board approved...
We have nothing to do, that is not in this budget, that is not in this budget.
Well, it is, because you're talking about kids being able to afford to go. The membership rates being charged right now are not what the select board approved, including with the automatic increase of cost of living every year.
I'm going to stop you. One of the things that the YMCA has consistently done, and they have done this with fundraising from other communities, not just the Bennington community, is if you cannot afford to be a member, and the membership rates are extremely reasonable, you fill out an application to have a membership for free. So I don't, like, it's outside this budget, but I want to say the YMCA has been incredibly transparent and generous.
Jeanie.
And that is outside this budget.
Nancy, let me, they are charging the rates to the Bennington residents that the select board approved.
Yes, thank you.
So when I look online, and I can't see what, a Bennington resident who wants to buy a day pass, or, I'm sorry, a membership for the year, adults and seniors, can they still buy memberships for the year?
Yes, $99 a year.
Yes, you can also buy a membership in the Y, which is, will cost you more, but if all you're interested in is the Bennington Recreation Center and its programs, there is a fee scheduled that this board approves on an annual basis, and we are looking at that now to come back to you for the coming year.
So everybody 24 through 99 is paying the same membership rate each year?
They're paying the membership rate that was approved by this board.
There's a different, no, there's a different rate for children than, and youth and seniors, yeah, so...
But I looked this morning, I thought had been different.
So Nancy, I suggest you look again, and if it's not there, then the Y can update their website. Okay, what else in the budget?
Senior Center.
What page?
Page 10. When you look at the senior center budget total, and the page before for administration, comes to about $141,000 total.
Can you, what line are you on?
Sure. Senior Center budget total, well, it's right at the heading on page 10.
Yeah.
Where you see where it says proposed, thirty-nine thousand, and the page below that, the administrative is 112,000.
That's correct.
And that comes up to a total of, what did I say, about 141. That's paid by our town taxpayers, correct?
That is correct.
But for three years, the word has been out in Bennington County that everyone can come use the senior center?
Everyone who's 50 and older can become a member of the Bennington Senior Center, yes.
For free.
For free.
And we'll just charge our own taxpayers.
That's correct.
And that's fair how?
That is there because the select board refused to adopt a fee schedule to be a member of the senior center.
And that is true, Stu brought it to the board, and the seniors did their own survey, they came back to us, and the users of the senior center said they did not want to charge anyone that wanted to come to the senior center, that they appreciated the diversity and the folks that showed up, and so the select board listened to that and said, well, if you don't want us charging people that are coming in from outside of Bennington, then we won't. And that is the way it is.
But Jeanie, you brought it up here three years ago.
Nancy, Nancy, we're on the budget, I know where you're going with it, and I'm just saying, stop. It is off, it is not on topic.
Jeanie, you said we're the only town in the county with a senior center.
It's true.
And it was up to our town to provide programming to all the seniors in Bennington County.
Well, if you look at the numbers, you will see that the YMCA has taken over programming for seniors to a very large extent, and, you know, that, we are following the directives that we receive from the senior center and the participants in the senior center, and Nancy, it is not, it is not germane to this budget, so...
It is germane, when we are charging our own taxpayers, many of whom are seniors...
Nancy, what are you proposing? What are you proposing on the budget?
What Stu had brought up several years ago.
No, on the budget, what are you bringing up? What is your proposal? We're on, we're doing the budget.
But what I said when I talked to you three years ago, if you want to be fair, have the other towns pay their share.
So Nancy, what is your proposal? What is your proposal? We are in a budget meeting.
The other town should be paying for their seniors, or charge the seniors, as Stu brought up years ago.
So what do you propose?
I think, Nancy, the only way you can do that is to set a membership fee. You can't, we can't look to Shastberry, or Pownell, or Arlington, or Husick Falls, as a governmental entity to pay based on estimated numbers of people who may attend the center.
So can seniors from, can seniors from New York and the Berkshires also come to the senior center?
Yes, they can.
They can, they can come from Colorado.
That's great. Keep charging the local taxpayers.
So Nancy, I'm going to ask you one last time, this is a budget meeting, if you have a proposal, if you have a line item...
I'm just pointing out, this is a private...
No, no pointing out, no pointing out. If you have a suggestion for this budget, this is a budget, this is one of two budget sessions, we are making changes to the budget...
And I've raised concerns about this for three years.
Nancy, you're raising it right now, and I'm asking you right now, what is your proposal? What would you like to see done? Whining is something you can do if you are a member of the public. If you are sitting at this table in a budget meeting, you either, you either are going to say, here's what I propose, I want to see a cut in this budget, I want to see an increase in this budget, that's all we can do here. What do you want to do?
The point I brought up, our taxpayers would not have paid for that building and the senior center if they'd known a few years ago, you would have said, oh, let's have everybody use it for free, and let's just keep charging our own taxpayers.
Actually, they did know that, because that has been the status quo. What was suggested was a change to the status quo. It's not that we got rid of a membership fee, it's that we did not add one.
Can I raise a point of order, please, Chair?
Yep, sorry, yes, okay.
If there is a suggestion to this budget, this is the time to discuss it, but it has to be a concrete suggestion, Nancy, we can't...
No, it's just a fact.
No, no.
Our local taxpayers should not be funding it.
Nancy, this is not a time for grandstanding. If you have a proposal, make it. If you don't...
Please tell us what you'd like us to correct on this budget, that would...
Well, I mean, trying to figure out...
No, can I ask you the direct question, please? What solution would you like to put on the table to answer the budget question that you've raised today? Because you've raised a question about funding the senior center, and I respect the question.
And the senior building.
What is the solution that you are proposing to that would answer your question?
Well, if we're paying this now, and of course, everything is still a mystery about the Ben High, what will that be to the taxpayers up there?
That's a different question, answer the question I just asked.
I'm asking about this budget, I'm respecting your question about how we are budgeting to fund our senior center in the coming fiscal year, and you've raised an issue that you are uncomfortable with the way we're funding our senior center. Please provide us with what you see as a solution that would solve the implied problem that you are raising.
That those participating who aren't local should be getting charged.
All right, so you're suggesting that we add a line to the revenue, revenue sources that sets a fee to belong to the senior center if you are not a Bennington resident. Are you making a motion, do you have a fee in mind?
No, Jeanie, I don't have a fee in mind.
But Nancy, that's how this gets solved today.
Okay, it should have been addressed three years ago.
I am sorry, we are sitting here right now trying to address it.
I'm doing the best I can.
We are trying to address it right now. If you want to make a proposal, so you're making a proposal that we have a fee to belong to the senior center, what would make it neutral?
Well, I...
Jeanie, this is not your, this is not your problem to solve. Well, I mean, we're in a budget session, so if we want to, if you want to address the senior center...
But it's Nancy's problem to solve, Nancy needs to come up with the fee, not you.
Can I just say, can I just say in dollars and cents, we don't have enough data today to propose an amount of money that non-Bennington residents would need to contribute. I'm assuming, Nancy, that you're looking to offset the tax revenue by the amount of money. That would take a study of how many out-of-Bennington residents currently and intend to join the senior center once we implement a fee, and I'm looking at our finance expert...
And we know the...
To make sure I'm making sense.
Yeah, we know the breakdown of, people have to sign in at the senior center, so...
But we don't know how many will continue to sign in after a fee is imposed.
Well, absolutely, but if we wanted to set a fee based on current 40%, I'm making this up completely, 40% are outside of Bennington, 60% are in Bennington, what would it take? So maybe, maybe what we can do is, before next Saturday's budget meeting, meet with the senior center director, find out what that percentage is of folks, and then let's, what part of the budget are we looking to offset? All of it?
Nancy, do you have that answer? I've lost track.
For what, the senior center?
We were talking about senior, senior revenue and where it comes from.
Well, I think you kind of have to know where you're going, if...
No, we don't, no, we don't.
You raised the question, we're trying to solve for it.
I have raised the question, and I realize this is all geared towards the Ben High, so I really...
No, it isn't.
Ben High has not come up in this conversation.
Ben High has nothing to do with this. Your concern for the past three years, according to you, is that the senior center is being subsidized, that non-Bennington residents are being subsidized for their attendance at the senior center.
Yes.
So what we are saying, and that has nothing to do with what happens next year or in 20 years, what you are suggesting, as I understand it, is that...
The goal in 2021, you were talking about putting the senior center at the Ben High.
That has nothing to do with it. What we're talking about right now is what is the cost, what do we want to offset? Do we want to offset operational costs, do we want to offset...
Let me make a point of clarity that might need to be made. This budget is built on what we know today, and we anticipate the changes to today's operation. There is no Ben High folded into this fiscal '26 budget, so we need to take that out of the equation and deal with that when it is presented to us.
But that has been the focus since 2021, with the senior up there.
It's not the focus of this budget.
Yeah, so what if the, what if we ask staff to look, to find out what the, like, the average percentage of non-Bennington residents is, and what that would look, we could look at the director's salary and at least, you know, have the, have a fee that covers that portion of the director's salary, I'm just thinking the rest of it, or, and related costs, and thinking building, the buildings there, whether there are three people there or 20 people there, as are the costs.
Well, so is the director, so if you're going to get into it...
Yeah, I know, so I don't even know what it is that we're trying...
I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish, I'm still trying to answer the question that Nancy asked.
Okay, well, that's all right, just let it go, let it go.
Nancy, I'm trying to accommodate your question.
What is it that you're, what is it that you're wanting to offset?
My concern, because I think a lot of these grants we've been hearing about, I mean, you can't keep saying we're not going to talk Ben High, are based on Bennington County, and that's why I said three years ago, if it's Bennington County, we need other towns to share with them.
So Nancy, back to the question that you've raised, on the senior center...
Yes.
If we're charging non-residents, why are we charging them? What is it, what is it that we're trying to cover in the budget?
To bring the cost down to the local taxpayers who fund it.
So which parts of the budget would you like to have it brought down on?
Well, it's $141,000 a year. When you put the building and the senior center together.
Between admin and building.
Well, I would also, I would point out that the building is also used, at least half the building is used by the meals program. I think if you were to look at a membership fee, you would look at the number of out-of-town people using the center, and attempt to offset the administrative cost of 112,460.
But Meals on Wheels pays us to rent the first floor, correct?
So we're not talking about that.
But that's, that's part of it.
Yeah, but that's a revenue on the other, on the other side of the book, so you wouldn't want to try to bring the building cost into a membership fee, because portions of this are already being paid by others.
Okay, so we're looking at 112,000 administrative costs, is that what I'm hearing? And, I think I'm losing my pages, and so we're, want to know what percentage of participants at the senior center live in Bennington, and what that, what implications that might have for a fee to belong.
And they have that information, correct?
I'm sorry?
They have the information, they have a sign-in.
They do, they have a sign-in every day, so...
I'll try to have the number for you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, all right, other things? Any other things? Yes, Jackie, please.
Good morning, my name is Jackie Matts, I'm a resident of Bennington, and the Chair I'm a resident of Bennington and the chair of the Charter Review Committee. I'm looking here at page four and five, I think. So one of the things that came up during the Charter Review Committee, we spoke with the director of facilities here in town, the director of facilities here in town, and they indicated to us at the time that there was sort of a gap between the amount of work required for some code enforcement activities, the property maintenance ordinance, and their capacity to meet that workload. So I'm looking on page four at the permit plan code enforce, as well as page five, Buildings and Grounds. I see modest increases to both of those. I'm just wondering if that gap, that deficit, still exists for that code enforcement work? If there have been allowances made for that in this budget to address that deficit, or if that work is happening now?
The answer is we've not attempted to add any personnel to either of those budgets at this time to address the gap that you referred to.
Okay. I think that's important work for this town. I hope the Select Board will consider the recommendation from the Charter Review Committee on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
The gap Jackie spoke of, are we speaking of personnel?
Yes.
Okay. And I understand, I can't remember the gentleman's name. I only met one gentleman from code enforcement. Is there someone else that...
We have two code enforcement individuals. There is the chief building inspector, who is also our director of facilities, Paul Danzaro. Then the code enforcement officer is Brigitte Gallant. So we have two persons in that department, and Dan, of course, is the zoning administrator, so he's also a part of the permitting and planning process. And then we have one clerical staff that is also paid out of that budget, that handles people who come to the reception desk. So there are technically four people in the permitting and planning office. Buildings and grounds is a different budget. There we have, there is an assistant director of facilities, is paid out of that budget, plus five, I believe, personnel, and they handle the repairs and maintenance of every building that the town owns, except those at the wastewater facility, those at the water filtration plant, and the DPW facility on Bowen Road, except that we are now assisting with a lot of the HVAC work at that facility with those folks.
I guess I have to go back and read their recommendation. I'm trying to sort out where this gap, do we actually have events that aren't happening because of staffing, or is just, like every situation, you could always do better with more?
Jackie, I'm thinking it's actually assistance. Oh, okay. Do you want to... I didn't know if Jackie wanted to clarify what the issue...
I'm good for Jackie, but I can certainly talk to...
Okay. All right.
So we're in a situation, the permitting, planning, code enforcement, in particular code enforcement, as any busy department is. We have to prioritize our work. We can't do everything. There are folks, and I understand, who would like us to prioritize our time on other things, and we'd love to be able to do that, but we don't have the staff to do everything that we probably should be doing or could be doing. That's just like the police. It's just like the DPW department. It's like everywhere. As Clark said, we'd love to have more staff to do more, but we also understand the impact on the taxpayer, and so we have not requested additional staff. That does mean that certain things may take longer to get accomplished. It also means, honestly, that certain things just are not, do not rise to a level of importance, but we can dedicate staff to address them. And that's just a fact of life, of having to work with limited resources, which we all do. This is not a woe-is-me story. This is the facts of life for any governmental entity that has more work than it can accomplish with the staff that it has.
Thank you, Dan. That's exactly what I was thinking. I hadn't heard there was some deficit in function. It's just things have to be prioritized, and that's...
It takes a long time to be done.
Right. All right. Just wanted to make sure that I was clear on my thoughts.
So Clark, I mean, I think depending on where you sit, it could be a deficit in function because it means that not everything that everyone would want to get done gets done, and that some things that, quite frankly, the town would like to get done, take a really long time to do it. So I think, I mean, it is a staffing issue, and this feels like, I mean, maybe we say this every single year, but it feels like we're always trying to say, what can we do with the staff we have? You know, how do we prioritize? We're trying to keep the tax rate as low as we can, you know. So another staff person in permitting would be joyous. I think we would all be extremely happy, but that's got an impact on the budget, and we are already, we are adding, in essence, two positions in the police department, and we are, and I'm not, and we're looking for additional administrative... No?
No. We have the...
We're just talking about Michelle's going to be overworked, but we're not actually addressing that? Okay.
What we did this past year was, we took an individual who was handling accounts payable, and we have moved her under the wing of Michelle Johnson to assist with human resources issues. So we now have given her assistance that she hasn't had in the past.
And so that person, though, is that person split between accounts payable? Okay. Because accounts payable is another pinch point, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Accounting.
And...
Accounting, okay.
I'm very close with this for Sharon.
Okay.
But it's not a new position.
Yeah. It's just a stretching of an individual.
It's what we do best.
It's reprioritizing.
Yes. Yes. Ah. So, yeah. So are there any, can you just, are there other pinch points? I mean, some, you know, it does feel like accounts payable has really busy times of year when other departments are able to pitch in. It sounds like DPW also has those kinds of concerns.
Yeah. And I, you know, RJ was always looking for an additional person or two because we have a long-time, very experienced workforce. There is substantial vacation time and time off that is allocated for employees. So would it be wonderful to have another employee or two in that division, which could then fill the gap when some of our experienced people are off on vacation or time off? That would be great. As I look at these budgets, when I prepare these budgets for you, I take a look at those things. I don't believe that we're in a financial condition yet to be able to do that. I think what we've achieved with creating the position for the bridge supervisor and creating a small department within the DPW to handle our bridges is going to be something that pays us back over time. If, in fact, that begins to impact us positively so that we start to look at a highway budget that is, has room for growth in labor, then, and if I'm still the manager, I'll be here asking for it. But at this time, I just don't feel we're at that location.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, we have done, I mean, the bridge crew, internal work at the wastewater treatment facility, adding Shannon as a mechanic. I mean, we've done, we are doing a lot of in-house.
Yes.
A lot of in-house. And I...
But Shannon is a new position.
Yes, I do get that.
That we were able to create.
Yes.
The IT person was a new position that we were able to create. Do they impact the budget? Yes, they do. Are they helping to pay for themselves over time? Yes, they are.
Absolutely. Right. And the communication coordinator, what the heck would we be doing right now if we did not have a person dedicated to public records requests? Yeah. Okay. So, all right. I think our plea to, I think for all of us, our plea to you is let us, you know, this is a push-pull, but we do worry that keeping our staffing, keeping people sane so that they can do good work is really important, and we want to make sure that we know where the pinch points are.
This is why we brought a clinician into the police department. No.
Do you want, could you talk a little bit about how two of the employees are working, or officials are working, to solve the issue with the charging stations where people will be able to pay to charge their cars?
Can we not put that on the, this is not in the budget? So I'm gonna...
I thought it was on here.
No, it's not there yet.
No, it isn't.
We will...
That's going to be on the next agenda for the Select Board?
Okay. So I'm just...
Yeah. It just isn't in this budget.
Thirty-eight hundred, we may not spend.
Well, no. I mean, there are expenses that we have because we are subsidizing the use of those charging stations. There are two that are...
But they're going to address that, and that's going to be on the budget? Or on the agenda?
It's not going to be part of this budget.
That'll be on the next agenda. We'll have that conversation.
Well, I don't think it'll be on your next agenda, but we're going to be bringing it to you. Your next agenda may be very full.
And we're not going to talk about reserve funds that we may be able to get rid of?
What?
So the reserve funds, so the reserve funds are all shown on here. If you have, what's your question? Yeah. What's your question?
Well, I thought we were going to go over them, but I won't. Like the Li-Lock Fund, I talked to about that.
Now's the time to go over them if you have questions, Nancy. That's what today is for. If you have questions about reserve funds, point us to them, and let's find out.
Okay. Li-Lock Fund.
Okay. What page?
It's not, it's in this, it's in your packet, the reserve funds. They're listed by fund. The Li-Lock Trail is a reserve that was established when John Dostal began the Li-Lock Trail. We were taking donations to support the trail. Donations continue to come in to support the trail, even though the trail is a shadow of what it was at the beginning. So when people make a donation that is specific to that use, we put it into that reserve. And obviously, from my perspective, I am not authorized to take that money and use it anywhere else. So we use it to replace the Li-Lock Trail signs when they're damaged. We use it to replace Li-Locks that are damaged that are part of the trail. That's what we use those monies for.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? I think maybe you emailed it out, but it didn't get included.
It's not in this budget.
It didn't, no, it's not in, it's also not in the second packet that you sent us, which was the spreadsheet of grants.
It wasn't part of that. It should have been in that packet.
Uh, no.
Okay.
No. So I see Clark has a copy of it.
We'll have to...
You have a copy. Where was it in yours?
It was in my email.
Yeah. It was from email, not from budget. Okay.
We'll get a hard copy out there, everybody.
Okay. All right. That's good.
I know. Yes. Wait. Hard copy, so you...
Boy, you're so timely!
Someone's taking care of me.
He actually does have that.
Thank you.
Nancy had to remind me I had a packet for her as well this morning, so...
All right.
So, yeah, we included these. I mean, I'm not sure that during this process, this is the time to discuss those, but for, in the future, I think the board may want to send an agenda item where we talk about...
So we said that we were going to discuss it at budget.
Yes, you did say that.
Yep. All right.
For example, on here, the Sleman Rec Center Fund, I thought we'd already spent that a year or two ago.
No, we spend that down when repairs are needed that address handicap issues at the rec center.
And we didn't spend all that money when we were doing the parking lot, moving things around for the handicapped?
No. Those were not used for that particular project. That was a project that was paid for mostly by the United Council.
If there's a fund balance, it means we didn't use the fund balance.
And I thought I remembered hearing or reading a year or two ago, I thought we were going to be spending the rest of that, so that was going to close.
No, we, I mean, there's $1,400 left. We've used it to replace the ADA access to the pool. We've used it to do some other things within the locker rooms and things like that to address ADA issues.
So when I see the trees, 617, couldn't we just spend it that year rather than have the separate account?
I'm sorry, which...
I'm sorry. Cherry trees, it's...
Yeah. Cherry trees were, that account has existed for a long, long time, going back before my time as manager. The town, working with the folks who were working at NASDAQ, which was an American-Japanese firm, wanted to plant cherry trees, and we planted a number of trees along the river walk. Many of those were paid for by donations, and we haven't used all of those donations. That particular reserve account has existed since that time. If, in fact, a cherry tree does die along the walkway where this money was originally allocated, we would use the funds that are available in the reserve to replace it. But fortunately, those trees have lasted a fairly...
Thirty years. Yep. So we're going to keep all these rather than...
I, if you would permit me the opportunity to go through them with my finance director so that we can establish the true basis, many of these existed long before I became manager, so that's for more than 30 years. And some of them are new, some of them we have created, such as the dog park, the memorial fountain, those kinds of things. I would like to be able to come back to you and say, these are the reserve funds that I believe can be moved into a revenue in the general fund because they're no longer useful, or that a particular issue is no longer available to us.
Is that something that we could also put on the agenda for the next budget meeting so that if there are some things that we are moving over, I mean, I'm looking at the senior center programs of $14,000, which is probably more than we would get in the fees, given how many people belong to the senior, go to the senior center, that might be...
We'll come, I'm going to push my finance director to work with me that over the next week, we'll come back to you with some suggestions and some descriptions of some of these funds so that you better understand what they are and how they were established, and if we can make some recommendations on those that can be removed and moved, and move the funds either into the fund balance or into a revenue account for this particular year, fund balance, then we will do so.
On 1580, the rec center equipment improvement, is that the money you're setting aside for the tennis courts and the pool?
That was money that was set aside, the rec center. I think the one you have been revised now. Does it have any money associated with it?
There's no money.
No. Yeah. Those were the funds that were in reserve for improvements to the tennis courts. They were expended this year.
So then, what you talked, you had in your last year, you said we were going to put $5,000 away for the pool and $6,000 away for the tennis courts, so you'd have the money in five years. We're not doing that now?
We are...
I mean, I see something under recreation for pool.
Yes. That's right. You will see transferred to reserve.
7150, 840 on page eight?
Yep. Yep. Those are monies that are being transferred to reserve for improvements to the pool, and I believe you may see some transferred to reserve in...
$6,000 down below it. 7160, 840, $6,000?
Yeah, in parks. Yep.
Didn't we just decide that we would talk about these as an agenda item? We're coming up on four hours here.
Okay. But these are in the budget. I'm just questioning them.
Yeah. So this is budget as opposed to this list?
Last question. I promise, everybody's got to get out.
Well, we have till 12.
If we're charging the taxpayers close to an extra $100,000 a year for pennies for parks, why aren't we planning ahead to take the money out of there rather than charging them more money?
Well, because we've established, the voters established the pennies for parks, so that's annual. So that doesn't change. so that's annual. So, that doesn't change. How we use that money will absolutely change. So, I think if there's a question about how we're using that money in the budget, go for it.
Pennies for parks. The tennis courts are at the rec center. That's one of our biggest, that's our most expensive park. The pool is inside, at the biggest, most expensive park. It seems to me that we're double-charging the taxpayers by creating this fund.
Well, there's no double-charging. The taxpayers voted to set up pennies for parks, so that's a, so that is a fund. And as you know, we've used it at Willow Park for improvements there, and it will go toward the new skate park, which is something, again, that the taxpayers have said they wanted.
All of it is going to the skateboard park. Just a couple of thousand went to Willow Park. When people voted on pennies for parks, the voters were told the money was needed to replace the wooden playground.
No, when they voted on it, they voted to set up a fund so that as we go forward, we have a fund rather than needing, rather than needing to close Willow Park because the equipment is not.
And officials were very clear. They needed that money. That's why I think most people voted. We got the ARPA, so we didn't need it.
Officials would be us.
Right, right.
And we absolutely did not say, here's how pennies for parks is going to be spent for the, you know, next 20 years. What we said was, do we want to establish a fund? And that is exactly what people voted on.
Yes, but.
And so, that is, again, not a budget question. That's already, that's already settled. If there is a question in the proposed budget, go there, okay?
Yes, because the voters voted for pennies for parks, because for a couple of years, everybody'd said, how are we going to replace the wooden playground? That's why I think most people did it. They wanted to make sure the playground would be there.
Well, we don't know people's intentions when they go into the ballot box, and I don't want to go there. What we can discuss is the budget.
Okay, I think it's unfair, if we're already charging them close to $100,000, pennies for parks, pennies recreation, to now say we're going to have another account to charge you for the tennis courts every five years and to regrow the pool.
So, I think what you're saying, so, I think maybe I'd frame it a little differently. We have, they are, they are, and we have a lot of recreational needs in this town, which is, which is something that we value, and the taxpayers have expressly said that they also think recreation is really important. And so, to offset the costs, so we don't have to keep having tax rates that go up and down, we have a set of reserves. And one of those now is pennies for park that lets us say, okay, we've got a project that's coming up. Instead of having to put it as a line item in the budget, we've got some money in reserve that we can use. Things that we know are going to be regular things that we need to do, like regrouding the pool, or resurfacing the tennis courts every five years or so, are things that we can plan for, and we can do that incrementally. And that is what our finance director has, this is the first year we haven't made you get up here and tell us this.
And this is actually good budgeting.
Yeah.
By having these monies earmarked.
Yeah, so that we are, over time, we know that the pool is going to need regrouding. So, why wait and then go, oh, my goodness, do we have enough money in pennies for parks? Or is there something else that we're competing with? Instead, for those things we know we have to do, it's the same as getting a new vehicle, right? You go ahead and build the rotation, you build the reserve, so that you keep your budget as steady as possible. And that is, so it is different. It is different. It is for a different reason that we have pennies for parks.
We have to live within our means, and it would be great to think we could afford all these great, big, expensive things.
What big expensive things are you talking about, Nancy?
Okay, you spent, the majority of the $300,000 all went to the skateboard park, correct?
What's that got to do with anything you're talking about?
Because you're starting a reserve fund for recreation activities at the rec center property. I would think we could plan ahead and say, okay, we need to have that money set aside, so we don't want to take all the pennies for park to put it someplace else.
Well, and that may happen in the future, but what we're saying right now is that we know two things that are regular occurrences. Every five years are regrouding the pool and resurfacing the tennis courts. So, we are preparing for that in a sensible way by taking a little bit of money every year, rather than saying we need 25,000 or whatever it was to regrow the pool.
If I could just say, that's not a, the items that we are trying to budget ahead for are regular, large-ticket maintenance items. That's not what voters were voting on, from what I remember, when the pennies for parks fund was established. It was project-based, new equipment, replacement equipment. We were struggling with a lack of funding for things like Willow Park and others. We weren't talking about regular maintenance issues that do need to be budgeted for well in advance. So, I don't think we are talking about reallocating pennies for parks today.
All right, anything else? So, for next time, the things that we have, agencies, from my two cents, I think it's always helpful for everybody to come in. Maybe, you know, parent recreations may not need to, but I think everybody else is in the budget. So, we're talking about agencies in the budget, organizations. We are also, oh, I've lost it, but we were going to have, besides the reserve funds, there was one other thing that we wanted, oh, senior center. Have some idea of percentage of residents and what it is, and what that portion of 112,000 might be.
Yep, got both of those highlighted.
Okay.
Okay, and then there would be an executive session where you review the salaries of the clerk, the manager, and the treasurer.
Is there, last year, both the town clerk and the town manager supplied us with information from VLCT, and maybe you supplemented that with some other information about salaries around the state? VLCT's data is only as good as those that respond and share info. We're laughing because we're not one of those towns that shares that info.
Just one year. We missed a year.
Okay, okay, okay. It just happened to be that year.
It just happened to be that year.
So, you know, so that, do we want, do we want that update on what current salaries are?
I find current data helpful for me when I'm looking at those things.
I have the 2024 VLCT data available. I can get that to you.
Okay, and, all right, and town clerk as well?
Yes.
By the way, I heard earlier the comment that VLCT is known as a rather large insurance company. It's much more than that. We've heard their resource being used at this meeting many times, and I just want to mention that Vermont League of Cities and Towns has been very helpful to me, being a new member on this board a year and a half ago. So, it is well worth the membership that the town pays for VLCT.
Yeah, the insurance arm is passive property.
Exactly.
Property and casualty insurance fund, which is a municipal fund established by the league.
All right, last call. Anything from select board members on this? We will, you know, come back to the budget next meeting, but what we can do today, we should. Yep, go ahead.
Yes, page nine of 15, under Recreation hyphen Ben High, 7800.650. It says lease payments. What exactly are we leasing?
Yes, what this is tracking for us, the expenditures that we've made, what you see here is the expenditures made in past years as part of the Ben High project. Those funds are all coming from the former ARPA funds.
Okay.
But we have to show, we're showing you what we have spent, so it's a way to track them. We don't, obviously, we don't budget for those expenditures, because they're essentially coming from a former reserve.
Okay.
Okay, anything from the public? Yes, please, Jason.
I do want to be on the clock here, but I kind of have to go earlier. Just a quick question about.
Introduce yourself, please.
Sorry, Jason Frederickson, Bennington, Vermont. A couple of meetings ago or something, somebody got up and was talking about emergency management and other things, and that there's stuff in the works for sheltering and whatever, and I was looking for something like that in the budget, or is that part of an existing budget line that we would be pulling that out of?
Can you get, can you say a little bit more?
I can't remember who it was, but they were talking about the summer cooling shelters that we had set up, or that we were working on that, and I come from an emergency management mindset, and I'm like, well, geez, setting up beds, that takes money and resources, too.
There's no money in this particular budget for either warming or cooling shelters at the present time.
And there is. That's part of the bigger picture currently.
Yeah, Jason, yes, there is, Bennington County Regional Commission, BRC, is, through their emergency management staff, have pulled together community members and members of the select board, Tom and I sit on that, to look at the short-term heating and cooling. But once a year, we also approve a, like a disaster emergency management plan. And it is, the services that are provided are in conjunction somewhat with Red Cross, somewhat with our own. We have some, we have some equipment ourselves, but it is, you know, resource, you know, it's one of those situations where resources would come in, because it would be collaborative effort. So, it's not specifically in the budget, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, I will ask for a motion to adjourn and go get muffins. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Okay, am I rescinding the motion?
What's the next meeting?
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday?
Yes, same time, same place. Okay, a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.